I always thought we were kind of spaced together.
Projector for me?
Hello, is this my friend?
Hi.
You have photos of Ron Claude?
Uh huh. No. Um, probably. I would have only seen that he started in video. Um, hey, would you like to want to see that? Oh, by the way, I did this to myself. I had a brilliant idea to... Um, I... No, I had a brilliant idea to put myself on the business department. So it's my fault, so. I can't assist fixing that one.
She run away?
I wanted to see.
Yeah, he scared you. He just scared you. Stephanie? Aaron, are we ready? All right, well, welcome to our festive council meeting. The decorations are courtesy of the baby celebration that was here this afternoon, and we just decided to leave the decorations up. The theme was Reach for the Stars for the baby celebration. And we had a... The babies come up and do a... We had a red carpet there, and they'd come up and they'd do a promenade here. And we said, "Baby, you're a star." So I think our council members are all stars, so we're just gonna do a collective, "Baby, you're a star" for our council members, if that's okay with the... Before we officially start, so on three, one, three, three. Baby, you're a star. Okay, there you go. Can't say that the city didn't treat you well. All right, so I've asked Manuel Bueno to lead us in an opening prayer slash invocation, and followed... After which Mark Burquist will lead us in the pledge of allegiance. So Manuel, if you'd come forward, thank you.
Our dear Father in Heaven, we're grateful for this evening and for the environment which we find ourselves. We're grateful for this facility to be able to meet as a municipality and to cover the business of our city and our home. We ask that we may do so efficiently that the mayor, the council, and the staff and participants will be able to express their opinions clearly and efficiently and effectively. We ask for thy protection while we're here and also to watch over us as we leave this evening. And we're grateful for our rights and to be able to live in this nation and in this wonderful state. We pray we're grateful for the weather, the storms, and the moisture that we've received lately, yesterday, and this past week. We're mindful of those who receive too much at one time and have had some flooding and ask thy blessings to be upon them. We pray that we may continue to receive more moisture this season and through the summer, that we may have enough for watering our lawns and trees, and that the farmers may have sufficient for their needs as well, and that the reservoirs may be able to fill up a little bit according to thy will. We pray for these things and ask for thy blessings this evening in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen. Did you join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you very much. We now have time for unscheduled public appearances. So if there's any item on the agenda that you want to speak to that is not a public hearing, there's only two. One is surpassing city property, the other is a conditional use approval. If there's anybody that would like to speak to anything else now at your time, or if you'd like to speak to something that's not on the agenda. So you have three minutes. That clock will track your time, and it will beep when your three minutes are up. State your name and...
My name's Sandy Pecker. Do you need my address?
No.
Okay. I have two questions, an item seven and item eight, and since there's not public input on those items, I wanted to ask it now. As you may know, we have a case pending in court against Highland City on the Millhaven Development, and the answer to these questions is consequential for our case. So number seven, the minor subdivision, final plat, the Chase subdivision, that is the... It's the item for approval of a proposed one-lot subdivision. Can you tell me if the property that makes up that one-lot subdivision is entirely the Chase property, or does it also contain property from the Millhaven owners?
Nathan?
Entirely the Chase property.
So there's no Millhaven property?
Correct.
Okay, all right, good. And then number two, the hollow subdivision, this is number eight, I'm sorry. This is a proposal to add property to the backs of lots 20, 21, 24, and 31 in the Millhaven subdivision. Can you tell me if this is a... Is this a separate amendment that's being proposed to be approved, or is it... Are you reapproving the whole Millhaven subdivision with this change to it?
We're amending the plat.
Pardon?
It's... The plat is being amended, I believe. Rob?
The final plat that was approved is being amended, but the only change to it is that little... To those lots. None of the other items or parts of the original approved plat are being affected by this decision, so it's not altering it. But it is amending the plat, the final plat that was approved.
Okay, so it's basically a reapproval of the whole plat?
The only issue that's before the council is whether these four lots should be amended. It touches that plat because it's all just one plat, but the only issue the council's deciding is whether these lots should be amended.
Okay, well, I'll put a more direct question. Suppose you approve this tonight, which I anticipate that you will, does that mean that we have to re-appeal the whole plat again?
Obviously, I can't advise you on your legal rights. My view of the situation is this doesn't affect any of the approvals before, and it doesn't touch on those issues that you were concerned about from the prior plat, so there wouldn't need to be a challenge to this. Because you're not challenging whether these lots should be bigger or not. That's not an issue, I believe, that you care about. But again, I can't fully advise you on your rights.
Okay. All right, thank you. My husband had some comments to make, too, but I just wanted clarification on that. Thank you.
You're welcome. Part of our concern is that this will perhaps make it more difficult to rectify that other... Other part of the Millhaven subdivision. Our coming mayor didn't approve of the Millhaven final plat because it didn't link... Because of the cul-de-sacs that weren't linked back together. Now, that is an issue, and because... And I'm trying to make this point simple. The landowners have a right to sell their property. We, as citizens, have a right that you follow the general... That you follow the general plan. And the general view among people is that it's simply advisory, but that is simply not true. The Ludma Law says that the first... Except as one part of it, it is just advisory. But the one part of it is the public uses to conform to general plan. After the legislative body has adopted a general plan, no street, park, or other public way, ground, place, or so on, may be constructed or authorized until and unless it conforms to the current general plan. And then the current general plan says specifically that cul-de-sacs are to be avoided, and if it's very difficult for them to be avoided, they are not to be any longer than 200 feet. So the Millhaven Development was illegal. It breaks state law. And your attorney advised you to the contrary in an email that he sent to you before your approval. He said, "There's no standard that says the city can or should prohibit a connection if it increases traffic on a local street beyond 1,000 vehicles per day. Instead, the city's general plan states that traffic volumes and categorizations are to help the city understand when to plan in improving a particular road." The plan says what the load is supposed to be. The plan says there are not to be subdivisions, no cul-de-sacs. And if there are cul-de-sacs, because you can't make the links through together, they better... They have to be under 200 feet. And so, as a citizen, we have a right that you follow that general plan, and we're claiming that you're not. And the addition of this other side part, we were urging a street that would be more eastern but up against the Chase property, which would allow those subdivisions to go across, and it would divert a lot of the traffic. And we believe that this other area, if Chase wants to sell their property, could be assist in that same effort, but... Or it could just block it and make it harder. The net result could very well be... We have this case at the court, and if we win, then it will come back against the city. And if you require Millhaven to make changes, they will probably sue you, and you'll have to end up suing your attorneys and their firm for ill-advising you on the legality of breaking the general plan law. Okay, anyone else?
Nope.
All right, thank you.
Hello, my name's Trevor Lucas. I live right opposite the new Millhaven subdivision. So my backyard faces the Hidden Pond Trail. So we were here a couple of weeks ago, or maybe it was last week, when it was discussed at the Planning Commission. It was mentioned how if they augment those lots, they don't be able to build their fence or the retaining wall right up to where the trail is, which is a concern, because that's open space that people value. And I recognize that it's their land, right? They have the right to be able to extend their lot and add to it or whatever, but knowing from my own personal experience, I'm not able to build a fence at all on my property because it's restrictive in my CCNRs. So what type of requirements is Millhaven going to put in to protect that open space? How far are they going to allow people to build back close to that trail? That's what I'm wondering.
I don't know of any CCNRs in the Millhaven Development, but that's ignorance. It's not...
Yeah. I mean, I guess that's the question is, is what kind of duty do they have, right? And, you know, maybe what's not necessarily legally required, but what should be required from a good... Being a good community neighbor perspective? And the other question I had is, why isn't this issue up to public debate? Why are we having to address this just beforehand like an afterthought? Why isn't it a bigger discourse?
Good question. It's... It would be unusual for it to be... They're following the process of amending a plat, and that's the process that we're going through right now. So there's no requirement beyond what's...
So are these types of questions that I'm asking, are they being asked of them by the city? What kind of... What kind of, you know, plea... What kind of arguments are being made for behalf of that open space with them?
They donated about six acres to a conservation easement, which was generous of them. And this property, it's private property. The current owner could build a fence if he wanted to right now, before he sold it. So that was his choice to leave it the way it is. I don't...
Yeah. So it just doesn't sound like really there's much answers in those regards. I mean, Millhaven can do what they want if they buy these properties and augment their lots, and whoever that buys those lots can build up as close to that trail as they want to. Is that what I'm hearing?
As close to their property line, they can build...
A 15-foot setback or whatever is just the standard?
It's... Yeah, they just have the standard development stuff that we all do.
Yeah.
My name is Mark Burquist. I live in the Hidden Pond area as well. And behind my property, again, will be the hollow subdivision with the amendment which we've been talking about. I initially was opposed to the building of the subdivision, but later came around to thinking, hey, you know, property rights, and I think they should be able to build. But I would ask you to consider holding off on the vote of the property until more information can be... I think this has been rushed, at least as a citizen, I feel. It's been rushed for the amendment for those four properties against my property. And as Trevor just mentioned, I understand property rights, and that belongs... That is being sold to Chase, but I wonder if there is some type of negotiating that can go on with the hollow subdivision developers so that we can protect the open space. And, you know, I'm willing to give and take, and I hope that you folks will, too. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay, moving on to the consent items. We have four. Are there any that council members would like to poll?
Mayor, I'd just like to disclose, in a prior time when Patterson Construction or Development had come up, I'd recused myself. I have not had any discussions with the easements for the last year and a half. The reason I recused myself is because we... They had approached me about an easement about a year and a half ago, and I haven't had any discussions with them since about that, so I will not be recusing myself on the Patterson home.
Okay. And that was for property you owned down in Spanish Fort?
Down in Salem.
Okay. All right. So I'll make a motion. Thank you.
I move that we, as a city council, approve consent items 2A, 2B, 2C, and 2D as delineated in the agenda.
Thank you. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Motion by Scott, second by Tim. Are we ready to vote? Okay, we do this electronically for those of you that have been here, that are here for the first time.
It gave me a strange error right before we started that I don't know what the problem is, so we probably need to do a voice.
Well, let's just... Let's do all of them roll call then, because that's similar. So we'll start with Brittany.
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Next agenda item is public hearing and ordinance for site plan and conditional use permit for Highland Business Park Building C. Now, I will... Before we let staff take that, and I assume it's Kelly, I will just note that on item 2D, I was a little bit concerned when I saw the word condominium, condominium plat, because we typically think of that as a residential issue, but a condominium only refers to a building that you subdivide and sell to different owners. So in the case of the office building that we're going to be talking about right now, because we approved 2D as a condominium plat, that means the owner could sell part of the building to somebody, part of the building to somebody else, and it functions as an office building, not a residential. Anyway, that's for anybody that had questions. So with that, I'll turn it over to Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of the council. Like Mayor Mann mentioned, this is associated with that condominium plat that was just approved. And this is Patterson Development that is requesting this site plan and conditional use permit. This is the vicinity map. A little difficult to see. It's kind of small, but the building that we're discussing today is just that little red square right there. Thank you. The blue is the existing two buildings that have already been built along Highland Boulevard, and the red is the site plan and conditional use permit request. A little bit of background, this is in the PO zone or PO district. Or district, a site... An overall master site plan was approved with the district, and so this building is referring to Building 7. This image is just the original site plan back... That was approved back in 2003. It's a little difficult to see. Building C is that third building right there. Overall, is a 4,572-square-foot building with about a 1,600-square-foot building footprint. The overall site has 54 parking stalls, which is over the required 45. The proposed hours of operation for the building are Monday through Saturday, 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, which falls in line with our required hours of operation defined in the municipal code. The accesses are from on the kind of southwest side. There's Sunset Drive. There's that main drive from there. And then on the northeast is Normandy Way. There are two drives that come in from that side. And the building itself is set back about 140 feet from Highland Boulevard. And then, just to give a little bit of perspective, is about 270 feet from the nearest residential property line across the street. This is the landscaping plan. The little red box right there is Building C. They have provided 35% landscaping, which is the minimum for the PO district for the overall site landscaping. We have included a stipulation in the approval that the landscaping in the median zone Highland Boulevard be completed before a certificate of occupancy is given for this building. We've had a few residents make comments regarding this, and it's an issue that we've had for a while, so we're just making... Giving a timeline on it. And the overall landscaping is consistent with the landscaping section for the PO district in the development code as well. These are the elevations. The Planning Commission is the approval body for the architectural approval, and they did approve it on July 27th. But just to give you a visual what it looks like, the materials, the main materials on the outside are just natural wood, and then stone veneer, which the stone has kind of... It's like a white theme. And then the brick veneer is a black-toned theme. They have provided the four-sided architecture, and they do meet the architectural guidelines for the PO district. There's actually a separate section for the roof design, and they also made that. It just basically has a list of prohibited roof types, and this does not fall under that.
So Kelly, this is what we hear with the pictures. Can I ask you a question, please?
Yeah.
So if we look at the warehousing that's next to this, you know, one of the concerns that was brought up a couple of years ago was a residential fill, that that was in the code, was to have a residential fill. And I understand we have a lot of different homes that look a lot of different ways, but looking at this, this is not consistent with what we're seeing next to it in the warehousing. Did the Planning Commission discuss, you know, we have one product that looks one way, this is in the same parking lot of that product, and this is kind of a different architectural fill? You don't have the different roofline design, which was one of the things the residents to... And I know that maybe you weren't here, but, you know, two to two and a half years ago, they were very concerned about the look of it having looked more residential to fit into the community, and this doesn't seem to be consistent with what we just... That was talked about two and a half years ago.
Right. I mean, typically, when we think of residential fill, we think of those roof pitches or the pointed roofs. And I, at least when I was reviewing it or talking about it with the Planning Commission, because the building is so small, adding a roof pitch would... Could possibly make it look more like a tiny home was my concern, but I... When it comes to just what is defined in the architectural design standard, like in the section and then the roof pitches section, this met the requirements. I do understand that there's kind of like a theme going on.
And I understand we have a development code here, but the question is, this isn't consistent with what is the use right next to it. I'm just saying, the building's right next to it. This... I'm just a little surprised. I understand the code, but why are we allowing something that's so inconsistent with what's already there in this PO zone in the same parking lot?
Outside of just... At least when I did my review, I do it kind of black-and-white based rather than kind of trying to interpret themes, which I... That's where the Planning Commission is welcome to put in their input, and to them it wasn't at least a concern that was vocalized.
The reason I bring this up, this is a heated topic two and a half years ago. We had a lot of residents... And Patterson Construction did an agreement in a sense that they would do certain type of rooflines. So to me, I'm just wondering... So to me, I'm just wondering, why is this changing now to what was agreed to two and a half years ago, to having that type of architecture? That's, I'm just saying that developer, I don't know, I'm just saying, I understand we have some newness that you were not here, this is, and this is meeting code. I understand this is meeting code, but it appeared, the reason is, I know the commissioner, council member Brian Braithwaite met with Patterson, and the agreement came to do a certain type of roofline, it was kind of an agreement with all the residents that this would fit as more of a residential fill, because that was one of their concerns, and now we're down the path, and this seems to be pulling away from what we agreed to about two and a half years ago.
Because I think the use, here the use is a pure office use, and the use then was an office warehouse use, so the idea was to address the office warehouse use and make it look more, more, and blend in more, and this is smaller office use, so the concern wasn't there from the residents and from who was notified with this, with this proposal as it was the previous.
Was it brought up a planning commission about some of these concerns? Did they discuss it?
No.
So Nathan, also, the two large buildings, AB, which are two parts, they were closer to the residential area, and I think that was the concerns of the neighbors there, but I don't see that we've had any comments or anyone from the neighborhood that's concerned about this smaller building, and they were all notified, correct?
Yes, they were. I, I received one call and one email, both of them were concerned about the landscaping in the medians and making sure that we got that done, and then they did, one of them just wanted to, I sent them pictures of the colored elevations because they wanted to see them, and I didn't get a response back.
So they were more concerned about the medians than the actual building?
From, yes, from my contacts.
That's interesting.
Do you have more?
Oh, yes, I do. Just to clarify, we did mail out those notices to the property owners within a 500-foot radius, and I sent them out for planning commission, the planning commission meeting as well as the city council meeting, so they received two letters that said basically the same thing. And those are the two correspondences that I just spoke about. Oh, sorry, you're good. And the planning commission, they did, like I said, approve the architectural plans, and they did hold a public hearing on July 27th. No one attended, no one made any comments, and they voted five to zero to recommend approval of the site plan and conditional use permit. And we as staff and the planning commission recommend that the city council approve the site plan and conditional use permit based on these five stipulations. Those first four are pretty standard, just making sure everything's finally approved by the city engineer and city fire marshal, and then that fifth one is addressing the landscaping in the medians in Highland Boulevard.
Kelly, another question is, as we look at this, you know, if we look at the original concept, how many buildings did the original concept happen this parcel? Do you know?
Oh, it did have two, and that's another thing with, I had to go back and read the history with the original Highland Business Park buildings, those two large office buildings, and how they originally submitted it to be one building, but from my understanding, the council and the residents felt better about it being separated into two, and so it was on that original one building pad, but it was, that site plan was updated with that approval to be those two separate buildings on that one pad, and so.
No, I get, so the original, now I'm going back when this was zoned as a PD district or as a, as a, as a PO district. There were two buildings there, right? And so right now we have two buildings on it, and so how are they able to get a third building?
So that's what I was kind of trying to explain. This building right here, Building 5, that's the pad that they came with in 2019 to build right there, and they, their proposal was just to be the one building, and then y'all or, well, just the council and the residents wanted it to be two separate buildings, just to give it more of that residential feel as it was so close to the residential zone. And so, to my understanding, that's why it was updated and allowed for them to have that pad and this pad, which obviously with the original pad, this building that's being proposed is a lot smaller than what was approved back then.
So what would prevent them, is there anything in our code that would prevent them from utilizing that, the space that they, they're doing now? Well, Kurt is expressing concern about how to get a third building. My question is, is there anything in the code that would prevent them from building something that meets our code?
So what, basically what Kelly is saying is that the, is, at the request of the council, they separated the building architecturally, so that was one building, and then this is the second one here. So, but no, there isn't anything that would prohibit.
So the issues around this particular piece, which prevent them from doing a build, a bigger building, is the easements that are there where they can't build a bigger building because of the easements?
Right. So if there was anything, yes, exactly. So if there was anything on the site that constrained the location of the building or anything like that, there would be, but as far as code that says, hey, you can't build a building here, there wouldn't be anything like that.
Okay. So I'm going to open it up for a public hearing, use my gavel. If anybody wants to speak to this issue, you're welcome to come up and share your thoughts. Okay, and just state your name when you, you're up at the podium.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, Manuel Bueno. I live kitty corner across the street from the subdivision. So on a couple of things, I appreciate Councilman Osler bringing up the history there, because there was quite a bit of going back and forth and a lot of residents who participated at that time. This has kind of come up really quickly and in the summertime, you know, when a lot of people are not here, a lot quicker than that original. When we had the original, first there was a notice of just a, a meeting with the developer, like a neighborhood meeting, and that, you know, there's lots of time. I want to point out, I have both letters that were emailed to me or mailed to me. So one was dated July 8th, notifying of the July 7th planning commission meeting, and then the second letter dated July 15th, which is even before the, you know, the planning commission's meeting, saying that the, the, you know, today's public hearing would be just a week later. So it seems like it's kind of just been pushed a little bit too quick, then especially from the original. Also, I think because we haven't had a lot of, you know, there's a few comments, I think probably there's only been like two, two residents mailed these letters. Do you know how many letters went out?
Gosh. My other properties, I think it was like, it was between 15 and 20 letters that are in the 500-foot radius.
Not a, not a lot, because just kind of where it sits and on the limits of the, you know, the city, there's not, not a lot of letters that were probably sent. That's at least what I noticed last time, and so we kind of like let everybody know, and then that's when there's more, I think, participation by the neighbors. Also in the history I want to bring up, you know, a good point, originally there was one building, one big building proposed, and we asked them to break it in two and kind of have it be, you know, back to back rather than along the Highland Boulevard, and they said that they couldn't do that because of certain, some type of easement. So I'm just wondering why now after, you know, they've got it built and they pre-planned it, because that parcel or that piece doesn't have any paving on it, why they need to add another building when originally they could have, you know, done that, and they said that they couldn't put two back behind each other because of a certain reason, and it didn't really make sense. So I would propose that there be a little more time taken on this. My biggest thing is I, is like Councilman Osler mentioned also, is that the, the design just doesn't really match to the code. If you look at the code, it specifically says residential in nature or residential flavor, and that doesn't match either, you know, buildings that they just built, which I have to give, I do have to give the developer a compliment to the, the end project that's there. It does look, you know, I think, we came together as best we could to, to make it look good, and, and I give them credit for, for that. So that's my biggest thing is, is it, it doesn't really match the design that's, that's there already, and which we, we worked in good faith quite a bit, you know, a couple of years ago to, to just have it fit in. So I hope that, you know, again, my recommendation is, we can just take a little more time, and maybe not in the summer when people are gone, in September to just, you know, just see a better design. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I just wanted to ask, so he was mailed a notice, did you say July 8th for the July 7th planning commission?
It's July 27th.
Okay.
For the planning commission.
July 8th for the planning commission.
On July 27th?
July 27th.
Okay.
Okay, it doesn't look like anyone else wants to come, is there anybody online there? Okay, public hearing closed. Council, yours is to discuss and dispose of how you.
I have, I have a couple of quick questions. One, well, actually, these two questions are for our attorney. So first of all, this conditional use permit rests under the new state laws for conditional use that we just passed because they redefine things as we understand, and I'd like you to explain that mainly for the public, it's always good for us to have refresher. And, and the second thing is, is this is listed as an administrative and not a legislative action? If you can maybe delineate that for the public that's here, if you will, please.
Certainly. As, as you correctly stated, the council did just take up recently a fairly extensive amendment to the city's conditional use ordinances, or the rules governing city's approvals of conditional uses because of state law changes that require more specific objective standards when reviewing and imposing conditions on conditional uses. And I guess maybe for the, the public, a conditional use is a use that is essentially an allowed use, but because it is due to certain reasons, it has, they have more impacts than we would expect, and so cities make them conditional in the sense of, the city wants to double-check it and make sure they have alleviated certain impacts. They can put on conditions regarding, for example, the medians and the landscaping, those kinds of things that aren't, spelled out by detail for every single project, allows you to do a little more project by project. That does not, however, give cities the authority to just pick and choose whether to allow a use or not. Once it is a conditional use, the presumption is it will be allowed, subject to reasonable conditions. And that's what that whole, as you recall, that ordinance we adopted for conditional uses was fairly extensive in the list of factors and standards that the city could look at. And as part of that, regarding the, the hearing process, the council amended the process a little bit to have public hearings during the city council. That amendment went into effect while the conditional use from Patterson was already pending, so we've kind of scrambled a little bit to get that notice out for the, the council to have that hearing today. So that's why that was a little, a little bit less timeframe on that than for the planning commission, because we were trying to comply with what the council wanted, to make sure that public hearing could be held and people were notified of it. And so, and on to the administrative, legislative, kind of touched on that. Administrative is, we check boxes, we ensure that factors are met, conditional uses, we have that list of conditions, as you see in the staff report, Kelly has gone through and identified, are there impacts to the environment? Are there impacts to streets or to the residences, and kind of talks through that and makes recommendations for conditions for the council to potentially impose. Legislative choices are rezones or ordinance where the council has far broader discretion in what it chooses to do or not to do.
Okay. Can I ask another question then?
Yes.
Okay. And I agree with the concerns of Councilman Osler and Mr. Bueno, but at the same time, with this new conditional use process, can we as a council go back and say to Pattersons, okay, this building's okay, but you need to redesign so it looks more like a house? I mean, at this point, could we do that? Is that?
Not particularly, primarily, as Kelly mentioned, the planning commission is actually the, the body that the city has chosen to make that decision on the kind of aesthetics of it. I know there's, there's a question of whether it's residential in nature and what residential feeling, I mean, obviously you think of more traditional houses with peaked roofs, you can also see a lot of residents do have flat top roofs, but they're far less common. That decision kind of was up to the planning commission, right? Kelly, the, the way the PO zone was set up is, those aesthetic choices were for the planning commission, and the council's not reviewing that. This is more just, here's what the planning commission reviewed, and on the conditional use side regarding kind of the impacts, what else do you think needs to be done? So, long way of saying, no, not really.
Okay, thank you.
I would like to comment on that. The last.
You'll have to come up to the mic.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. So my comment on that is, at the original approval, the, you know, that governing body for design actually declined the project. It came to the council anyway, and the council was the one that in the end, you know, through, through the process, working with the residents, the developer, and together came up with the design. So ideally, yes, that should be the way it works, is the, the planning commission should do the design, but that actually wasn't what happened last time for the original approval. So.
Thank you.
And just kind of, not directly response, but as another note, the, the PO zone does talk about certain roof types that are prohibited, and that was kind of a, a list of A through G, whatever that number is, seven, seven roofs that are strictly prohibited, and a flat roof is not one of those, so theoretically the zone could allow it, subject to planning commission approval. And it may have been processed last time I wasn't around, but maybe there was more of a back and forth with the developer, but for this one, I think the developer submitted a specific plan, I'm not sure how it came to be.
Any other questions?
So Rob, if we feel like we want planning commission to go back and review this with our concerns, is that something we can do? Send it back to them or no? Did I stump you?
No, and, and no. I mean, really, the way to, to do that is essentially would be, you would be appealing the planning commission's decision, and that's, the way that's structured is there's kind of a two-tiered approval system. They handle aesthetics, you handle impacts on neighborhood with the conditional use process. And there is obviously, it's going to be some overlap, you could say, the, the kind of design aesthetics theoretically, but because you have delegated to the planning commission to make that decision, you don't have the authority to then come back and say, you made that decision wrong in that sense. You could change the, the zone, obviously, moving forward to say, hey, in the future, we'd like to have this all come to us. I mean, that's, that's your legislative authority, but on this one where you've set up a process to then say, developer, Patterson, you came in, you got an approval that we said you could get, and then we, a body who's not actually reviewing that decision, told them to do it again, that's, I do not recommend that.
So we're keeping you busy, Rob. So help me, and I'm just trying to remember on our notice timing, is that the dates are supposed to be seven days or 10 days of a notice?
Now it's 10 days at the time I sent it, to get it. So usually, like the Tuesday is 14 days before, I send them out the Thursday before that Tuesday, so it gives plenty of time for them to have the letter and plenty of time before the meeting. And it's a force of habit, and so even though it changed, I am probably going to continue doing it that way, but.
Okay, so let's just go back to what, so. Okay, so let's just go back to what, so Rob, have we noticed this meeting correctly for this agenda item? If our code said seven days and Mr. Bueno has a, a letter from July 27th, has this item been noticed correctly?
Sorry.
So here's, here's the issue with that. The, the Patterson plan was in flight when we changed the code. So technically, their, their process was the old process. What we did was, we tried to say, "Okay, we know the council wanted a second public hearing." So we did our best to add it, even though we technically didn't have to.
Sorry, even though it was added, it, both notices were sent over. Both notices were sent over 14 days before those meetings. So the July 8th was for the July 27th meeting. And then for this meeting, it was sent a week after July 8th, so July 15th for this meeting.
Is somebody from Patterson here?
Yes, Isaac is here.
Andrew Patterson. Do any of, push the button?
No, you're good.
Okay.
So, do you have questions for him?
Well, I guess I was just kind of wondering, because it seemed like, I'm not sure if you had a specific concern. It sounded like you mentioned the two buildings, but that was better than one, right? Generally preferable from last time, if I remember. So it seems to me like then, the thing that we're most concerned about is what the building looks like. So then I guess I'm just wondering if that's open to negotiation on your side?
I wasn't the one personally to design the building. I will leave off on that one. This building is much smaller. To step back a moment with what Mr. Bueno was saying. This building is going there. There is an easement. And so when we were originally working on Building A and Building B, those type of buildings do not fit well in that location. So this is a smaller, meant to be office space. So it is a completely different use and purpose on that. And so I believe it was designed with intentions to function and appear different as to not be confusing in its purpose.
Okay, so is that, you would not be interested in just looking at the building so that it meets closer to what the other one was, or what the residents are talking about? Like, this is the design that you're set on?
This is the design that I've been given, where I personally designed it. We can, it's always hard to say, we can take a look, because that's not really an answer. That means we'll do anything, and that's not an answer I feel is helpful to the council or to the residents. But there, I can see what we can consider, if there's something that has, or just what the concern is. But with the plan, the building I was given, this is the one that was decided as the more professional office feel.
So I just had one question for you. So it can't be inexpensive for the Pattersons to landscape those medians? Is that right? You agreed to do that in that section? As part of getting this small building approved?
Yeah.
Because you want that area to look nice, because that's kind of where your headquarters is and everything. But that, that's a personal expense for your company that kind of goes in with this. Is that correct?
Yes, it is, yeah.
Okay.
That would be part of the.
Do you have any idea how much that will cost, or kind of a ballpark figure?
I would have to get with a landscaper and see. A lot of the times, we're dealing with landscapers, is that everything's delayed.
Sure.
And it's something that is not, something that we want to become a norm, of having delays in projects or in that. But a landscaper could put a bid together on that.
So your company's been more than willing to do that, it sounds like. Is that right?
Yeah, I, I do remember that as a discussion item, and just trying to get other things forward. There's just certain delays that happen, and not enough material. But again, this is something that we can get to have function, is getting the medians done.
Well, you know, I, I've sat on the council for a few years, and I'm probably not the greatest advocate for developers. But I think your company in many ways has kind of bent over backwards to redesign Building AB, which is kind of one building, to make it more compatible with the neighborhood. And that you're willing to fix up the median streets, which the comments we had, other than Mr. Bueno, they were worried about that more. So, you know, I just want to say I appreciate your efforts on this. Now, I, I kind of agree with the rest of the council, there's some way to make it look more residential would be great. But I really appreciate all the work you've done on that over time.
Andrew, I have a question for you. Do you know what type of landscaping is going into that median?
I do not at this time.
I do. Sorry, yes, it's, it's not on here. It's not on the landscaping plan. But it's per request of Josh, our park superintendent. On their original site plan, it had those medians full of shrubs and bushes and flowers and trees. And he's like, "No." So we're doing just cobblestone and trees. That's what they're sticking to. We've spoken with Ken about that.
Thanks. I just think that we need to take conservation into, just thinking about that as we just develop these medians.
Mr. Patterson, I, you know, as we look at your warehouse product, I want to compliment you on, you know, as I drive past it, I, I thought, you know, that is a very nice warehouse product. You know, and so it's, it's something appreciative, that you worked with the residents in the past to kind of work at it. I recognize that you have a concept plan here and drawings. I'd recommend, and I, and I know you guys, you know, you have your offices across the street from here. But it would be a recommendation to maybe just kind of visit with some of the residents to make sure if some of their, their designs, or maybe just if, if there's something that they're concerned about the residential feel or, or things that way. I recognize that the Planning Commission's already approved it, you know, the, the design. But I, I just, you guys have done, been a good steward, like Councilmember, you know, Smith had mentioned, that I think you guys have been a pretty good member of our community. You, you did listen to the residents, you know, in the past. So I just want to just encourage that you kind of listen, see if there's something that they might better, you know, have a good median there. I recognize that maybe this has already been approved, but if you can see something to work with the residents, it'd be appreciative.
Okay. I can pass that along and see where, what we can anticipate on that, on that. But yeah, I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Andrew? All right, I think you're off the hot seat for the moment.
Thank you.
Okay, man, but really short, okay? Because the intent of, of the public hearing is to get everything out.
I was trying to thank you.
We're not going to have a dialogue. It makes our meetings really long.
I just wanted to comment on, on Councilman Smith's comment about the park strip. And I believe that that was actually proved not in the orig, like, the original approval a year or two ago. That Patterson had already agreed to, to finish that. And actually, they agreed to that way, way even before then. The reason why the park strips are not finished, I've always driven up, you know, turned on, on Highland Boulevard when I first moved there, and I thought, "Why are, why are those medians not finished?" And the, from what I remember is that Patterson, when they developed that area, got the council to agree to not require them to finish it until both sides of the street were developed. And so I believe in the original approval, they've already agreed to, to, to do that. So it's not something new that's required with this amendment. Is that correct?
Yes, that's, we're just putting a definite timeline by saying you can't get your C of O until this is done.
Yeah, and, and, but I think that was, even then, was that part of that approval. Like, they couldn't either get a business license or a C of O without those park strips being finished. So I just want to be, be clear about that.
But they haven't been finished in 20 years, so.
Right, but I'm, I'm just saying it's not part of this approval, it was part of the previous approval.
Thank you, Bueno. All right, council, is there a motion or further discussion?
Can I ask just one quick question to Rob? Rob said this is administrative, correct?
Correct.
And any denial based on design or aesthetics would have needed to happen at the Planning Commission?
Yes, you're not reviewing the Planning Commission's decision. If you want to impose conditions, or if you believe it doesn't meet the city's code, the standards, you could deny it for that reason, but not for the Planning Commission's decision. And if I may, my name is Rob Patterson. I don't know them. I have no relationship. I always feel bad when Patterson comes up, I'm not a, I'm not that Patterson, but you're probably a great Patterson.
And, and we asked before we heard him. Okay, council, it's in your court.
And would you be willing to have a discussion with the residents about just colors and things?
Yes.
I, I think we can have a discussion, would, would be a great way to put it, on colors and schemes. There, I think, on the aesthetics part of it, changing the structure is, at that, this time, not something that is a concept we're changing. If that's fair to state it that way. Thank you.
Okay, motion, discussion?
I move the city council adopt the ordinance approved in the site plan, approve the conditional use permit for the Highland Business Park C, subject to the five stipulations recommended by staff.
I'll second.
Motion by Kurt, second by Kim, and we'll start with Scott.
Oh, are we still in voice?
Yeah, we're not. And I think for the whole meeting, we're voice.
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Britten?
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. All right, item four, disposal of public property. Who was doing that one, Nathan?
That's me.
It's Kelly, right?
Like, you can assume, yeah. This will be a quicker one. Back on July 20th, the last city council meeting, the council approved or declared this specific property, which I'll show on the next slide, as surplus. And so the second item that is stated in the municipal code that we need to do to officially dispose of real public property is to hold a public hearing, a hearing on the item. This is the illustration, so it's that entire lot, parcel two, which is at 35,546 square feet. And that's to eventually be sold as a residential lot. And then that portion on the south end of Lot One, that's 3,190 square feet. And that's to be added to and sold to the property owner of Lot One, to be added to his lot. And we're just taking care of combining the two lots. If you see on the parcel map, there's a dividing line, because in the original plat, it was two separate lots. Now it's one, so we're just taking care of that while we're doing this. And we, as staff, just recommended the council hold a public hearing. There's no motion that needs to be made for this item, so.
So we just hold a public hearing? Is that right, Rob? And then we just close the public hearing and, and then we're done?
No, this is, this is one you actually, you make a motion to dispose.
That's what was already done.
Right. Yes, it says legislative.
Okay. I, I, I think Nathan's correct here, Kelly.
Okay, that's okay.
All right. Okay, so a public hearing open on the disposal of two trucks from our fleet. And I think the word fleet makes it sound vaster than it is, but we do have a fleet of vehicles, right? Oh, this is Pebble Lane. I am so sorry.
Maybe they'd like a couple cars in there, too. I mean, we'll lose.
Our truck, that was in the.
Consent.
That was in the consent, sorry. My mind was wandering. So, did you want to cover any of the information about the Pebble Lane property?
Oh, yeah, I can. This is just the residual from, if you can see the lines on the south side, or on the bottom of the plat. And that's for the Canal Boulevard project. And so, a lot of years ago, the city purchased a couple of the lots along Canal Boulevard to make so we could take some of the land and use that as the east-west connector. Now that that is completed, we are just adjusting the boundary lines of those residential lots just to match up with what is existing. And so that, that boundary on the north side of Canal Boulevard, that is what the existing fence line is along Canal Boulevard.
So we have two separate sections. This one is quite small, like 1300.
That's the 3,190, right there, parcel one.
Is it actually buildable lot, right?
Yes, for Lot One, that's, oh, you mean the second one?
Right.
Yes, that's a buildable lot.
And do we need, do we need to share anything about pricing, Nathan? Just that we're going to dispose of it?
Dispose of it through, listening with a real estate agent.
Okay. Andy? Is it plugged in?
There you go, it likes me now. Point of clarification. So our plan would be to list the large lot, that's a whole lot, with an agent. And then there'll be a forthcoming purchase agreement for the small parcel with the homeowner there on the corner. So just that clarification. So you've got two actions that would ensue in the future.
So one will be through a real estate agent, and others just negotiations between us, the county mag, and the county and the property owner.
And the property owner, yeah.
Correct.
So can I mention one thing for the public hearing? So I think we have to remember, and we've discussed this as a council before, but for the public, that Lot One, that little piece of property, is actually on the north side of the wall that's built along Canal Boulevard. So it's a little piece of city property that's, I mean, unusable for the city in any, and it makes sense to go into Lot One.
Agreed. Yes, it serves no purpose. So council, any other slides? Any other questions, council? So let me open a public hearing. Public hearing open on the disposal of those two pieces of property that Kelly just reviewed with us.
Hi, Jared Oldham. I just, to clarify, the full lot is going to be one lot. It's not going to be split into two.
Correct.
Okay, that's it. I don't care.
Easy, easy peasy. Can I hire you to come back and ask easy questions? Any, any other comments? Anything online, Erin? All right, public hearing closed, council, further discussion or motion?
Oh, so that, Nathan and Kelly, item number four, does it need a motion? Or are we doing a motion for item number five? That was, I think, where the confusion kind of came up. The one's public hearing, there's no motion, but we have another item, number five, that also deals with, with this.
Five's a plat amendment.
Okay.
So four and five are two different items.
There'll be some lot line adjustments made on item five.
Is it, have a motion? Is it just a resolution? We're supposed to make a motion to approve the resolution?
So, so the process is followed.
Just to approve it a second time.
So we have to declare the property a surplus, and then hold a public hearing, and accept comment on the proposed disposition, and then direct staff to move forward.
So was that direction via motion, or?
I guess you, yes, do that.
It just says proposed motion, not applicable.
Yeah, that's, that's me. Ignore it.
It's essentially, the, the council made the decision to declare it a surplus. You hold this hearing to make sure, hey, we're thinking of selling this. Does anyone have any comments? We want to make sure we've gotten comment before we make a final, final decision to tell staff to go do it. And that's what this is. So if you have any other comments or concerns, you want to undo the surplusing, or you want to just say, "Staff, you got it. We're good with this." And just make a motion to saying, you know, proceed as we have directed regarding the sale of these surplus properties.
I'll make that motion. Okay, unless you have more questions. I'm sorry.
No, I said I'll second.
Okay. But I haven't even made it. Okay. I move that the Highland City Council direct the city staff to proceed with surplusing the property and putting the property up for bid, basically. Is it second?
Just not quite for bid, just through the real estate.
Real estate, yes, okay.
That is corrected.
Brittany, did you second that?
Yes, I will second that.
Okay, so motion by Scott, second by Brittany. We'll start with Kim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Okay. That passes unanimously. Okay, on to item five, which is adjusting the lot lines for the property, and adjusting the plats for the property you just agreed to dispose. So go ahead, Kelly.
Thank you, mayor, and members of the council. This is kind of just a continuation of the last item. Here's a vicinity map. It's just showing those lot lines around lot one and lot two of the amended Pebble Lane Estates plat.
So go back, Kelly. So the adjustments, the current lot lines are in yellow. That's from the Utah County parcel map. And the red, where it overlaps the yellow line.
Yes, so the red is where the fence line is currently, and so...
On lot one, A, and then on B, you're essentially making the lot north bigger and shrinking the lot B. Is that correct?
Oh, yes, yes. Because we're combining that, adding the small sliver on the south end, and then that is just taking the chunk off that was used for Canal Boulevard.
Got it.
That's a little difficult to see. It's very difficult, at least on this. The original plat was approved back in 2006. Can y'all see it on the TV?
Yes.
Okay. But basically, lot one was split into two lots originally, but we're just taking care of that, combining it into one lot, which the property owner owns both of them. And then, like Rob explained, they will be purchasing, will have a purchase contract come to the council for approval, for him to purchase that residual piece along the fence line. There is the plat amendment, if you can see. And then, we, as staff, just recommend that the city council accept the findings, that it meets the requirements of the development code, and approve the final plat amendment for Pebble Lane Estates plat B.
Let me ask you one question.
Yes.
So the original plat, basically, had to be adjusted to build the road. I mean, we're approving that, but without taking out most of lot two, and large parts of the southern portion of these other lots, you could have never built the road. Is that correct? As far as I can see from the map.
Yes, with what, square footage we had originally. That's correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. Okay, any other discussion on the council?
I'd like to make a motion, if that's okay.
That would be awesome.
I move that the city council accept the findings and approve Pebble Lane Estates plat B.
Okay, there's a motion by Kim, who is a star for doing the motion.
I'll second that.
I didn't get a star.
Oh, you didn't. You didn't.
Sorry, I just...
Got a star.
I second that.
Motion by Kim, second by Kurt. Okay, we'll start with Tim.
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Okay, let it be known that future motions, you'll all be a star.
Great.
And I apologize for omitting that in previous motions. All right. Interesting topic, item six, a resolution placing recreation arts and parks tax on the 2021 municipal ballot. And Erin, that is your baby.
This is mine, so Kelly gets to take a little bit of a break. Mayor and council, we've talked about this quite a bit, and this presentation is almost exactly the same as what we talked about last time. So just to warn you, for the benefit of the public, and those who might not know what we're doing, I'd like to go through it, but I will try to be brief. So, mayor and council, a RAP tax, and members of the public, is a 0.1% sales tax that we estimate would be, would produce between $135,000 and $164,000 for the city. State law tells us where we can spend those funds that we would collect from this, and I'll get into detail on that a little bit later. In order to implement a RAP tax, city council has to put it on the ballot, and then it has to be approved by voters. If it is approved by voters, it goes for 10 years, and then the city can go through the reauthorization process if we so choose. First, we had to check with Utah County to make sure they weren't going to do a countywide tax, and they indicated to us they are not interested in that. So we, there was a subcommittee on the RAP tax with council member Bills, Rodella, and Mayor Mann. And in our meetings, the recommendation was to limit, while state code outlines a few different ways we could spend it, to limit the spending only to parks and trails, essentially to the recreation portion. The idea behind this is that the residents can feel confident as to where that money would be going. So when it went to ballot, hopefully, they would feel confident in that. So as the mayor and council is very well aware, there is unlimited ways we could spend it in parks and trails. Some ideas, we recently created a Parks Capital Repair and Improvement List. We can absolutely easily spend portions of it there every year. Assuming Mountain Ridge, we're able to get Mountain Ridge Park to move forward, we will likely need a new employee for that. In addition, there will be maintenance costs associated with Mountain Ridge Park. We've also created a five-year trail plan, and we could start to move more quickly on that as well, or some potential uses for the funds. We don't have to be absolutely specific right now, but we do need to indicate what categories, the council has to indicate what categories you're interested in at this point, because that's what goes on the ballot. So the proposed ballot question I wrote based on the RAP tax recommendation is to limit it to, so shall Highland City be authorized to impose the sales and use tax to fund recreational facilities? So I limited it to just recreational facilities, would pretty much limit us to parks and trails in the city. So the state law does give us some more categories we can choose if council would like to. So that includes cultural and zoological facilities, and then botanical, cultural, or zoological organizations. If you approve this resolution, we'll work to get it on the ballot. As a part of that, we have to produce a voter information pamphlet. We have to allow time for individuals to submit arguments for that voter information pamphlet. We'll also hold a public meeting to talk about the RAP tax. And then the election, if it was approved, it would go into effect next April. And then, as a reminder, we just, the city, the city has to remain neutral on this. Just give facts and provide equal time to both sides of the argument for the RAP tax. And I guess really, counsel, do you have any questions? I think the heart of the decision we need you to make tonight really is, is this the question, well, do you want to put this on the ballot? And if so, is this the question you want to ask, or do you want to add additional categories?
I think I have a little concern with that, because it says to help fund recreational facilities in Highland, and my mind automatically goes to a rec center.
Unfortunately, so state law dictates exactly what it means. And so recreational facilities, while it could mean a rec center, it also means parks and trails.
Yeah.
And we have to stay with their language.
Correct. We can, so there is an argument produced, that the city will produce in favor of the RAP tax. And so we can absolutely outline in that, the intended uses are, you know, and go into detail of 500 words. And we could outline that it's not a rec center. It's intended to be parks and trails.
Sooner, information pamphlet, we can delineate.
Correct. We can expound, but in the ballot language, we have to stick to state code.
Okay.
Is there any way in here to put down how much that would be part of a dollar? Because when you see 0.1%, some could equate that a little bit different. Is there any way to put down, like, for a dollar, this would equate this?
I'm going to answer that, and if I'm wrong, Rob can correct me. But again, my understanding is we have to stick to exactly what state code says we can put on the ballot. We can
Put that in our...
We can explain that in the argument, but what goes on the ballot is this.
Now to your question, I think this is a question that I would have to the council. In our current, in the budget year right now, we're showing that we would have a budget surplus of $248,284. And so as a resident, I'm just looking as a, if I was a resident, why would they say, hey, you're showing a surplus in your funds, why, how are you going to justify this tax increase? Because, and I understand it's going to be a sales tax. It's going to be happening from others coming across, not just from Highland. I mean, so there's some reasoning. I mean, I can say, okay, we're letting the residents decide if they'd like to have this type of tax. I'm just bringing that to the council as a discussion that might come up.
I think it's, then we turn into, we are proactive city council that's looking at long-term planning, and we are in the midst of, you know, designing a park and trails, and we want to take into account not just short-term solutions, but long-term solutions.
So the budget surplus that we have in our budget, Tyler, it's limited to the planned expenses that we have, but we could easily expand what we're spending on, for example, on Mountain Ridge Park. And with construction costs going up, it could go into that, it could go into roads.
That's correct. It is part of the general fund.
Yes. The additional funding, like was mentioned, it could go into parks, we could accelerate the pavilions that we put in, the bathrooms that we put in parks that don't currently have them. We run a very, very tight budget, and so this is just a vehicle for saying, okay, if we want to accelerate anything that we're doing with respects to parks and trails, this would help do that.
Certainly.
And it's not that those aren't needed, they've just, they've long been not done. For example, pavilion in Beacon Hills Park has long been not done.
Erin, just for my clarification, you mentioned an employee for Mountain Ridge Park with the added expenses of Mountain Ridge Park. I thought that with a RAP tax, we can't use it for operating expenses, can we? It doesn't have to be for capital?
It actually can be for operating expenses. It's to operate the recreational facility.
Which is the park. The state code does allow you to spend it on operational or capital.
I would encourage, me, this is a conversation probably for the committee. I would, I think it's a better use for capital, in my opinion. Just anything physical, right? Even a park bench or something that we wouldn't consider capital from the amount spent standpoint. But I, from a public information standpoint, and from a, to help the residents feel better, I feel like it's a better use of funds to spend on one-time capital expenses, right? Because ultimately, even if it is approved, it's 10 years. It's not completely ongoing, right? Ongoing for 10 years. I think a better use would be capital, and spread around the city, frankly, as well.
So let's just kind of, as this money, let's assume this is approved. As the money comes in, Tyler, what account, would this go into its own separate account, or is this going to be, just comes in and commingles as, with the general fund? How does this money, if it is approved and it comes in, how's it come in? What category would it come into?
It would have to be segregated in one form or another. If the city created another fund, that might be a possibility. But we would, whether it's in its own fund, or we are accounting for it separately, similar to what we do with impact fees or other types of revenue, that has to be very carefully dedicated to a specific purpose.
So I'm just saying, as a council, so let's assume we have $130,000 coming a year. We could look at the specific budget that went, that $130,000 is going to, to make sure it's being earmarked to what we put out here on the ballot proposition. I'm just saying, it's not being slipped into the general fund, correct?
Correct. In any shape or form, can it just be mixed in for whatever purpose? No? The law is very clear on that.
Do you have to have, like, a RAP tax committee that decides where these goes? Okay, because I know other cities do have committees for their park and their RAP tax, but you don't have to have a committee.
You don't have to.
Okay.
No. So it's up to us, if it's approved by voters, it's up to the city, you know, staff and council would work together to determine how we would want to decide how to spend those funds within what of our category is outlined on the ballot.
Okay.
So I think in the case of other cities, they actually plan to dedicate a portion of it towards grants to organizations that fit the category.
Yeah, Department of American Fork.
And so then, like, the committee there is the one that determines which people get grant money.
So right now, our question is, are we okay with this language? Should we add, what's the next slide? These ones also, any of these, or are we okay leaving these ones off?
That's correct. That's the decision we need from councils.
I think based off of city survey that we just had here, you know, the other one you maybe looked at is cultural, but that did not seem to be a strong support in the community to add the words cultural and recreational. So I would recommend if we are going to do something, it's only to fund recreational.
Me, too.
You look like you want to say something, Brittany. Okay. Anybody else?
I'd like to make a comment. So, as I've been on the council, I've been pretty opposed to raising taxes, because I have a lot of citizens that come to me and say, don't raise our taxes. And, you know, the mayor's been talking about giving us stars for the motions. And a lot of these, I might get hit by a laser beam from the Death Star if I support this. So, you know, it's kind of crazy. But let me tell you what I've thought about a lot. First of all, I think we need to emphasize the fact that for every $100 you spend, it's 10 cents that goes into this tax, right? Or it's one cent for every $10.
Penny for every $10.
Yeah, one cent for every $10. So it's, and it's a sales tax, which of all the taxes, I think is the fairest tax, because you choose whether you buy things or not. And the other thing we haven't talked about is the fact that American Fork has a RAP tax. So many of the people, our citizens of Highland, go down there, and they pay a RAP tax that goes to American Fork, and don't think twice about it.
As does Cedar Hills, and it will be on Lehigh's ballot this year.
Cedar Hills does. We spent a lot of money at Walmart in Cedar Hills. It's a RAP tax for them, probably helped with their park. I don't know where they're spending it 100%. And Lehigh will soon probably have one. So basically, we're all paying the RAP tax now to other cities, which benefits them. So if you kind of think it through, if we have a small RAP tax, there's a good chance that some of those people, especially people from Alpine who shop in Highland, at Macy's and other stores, will pay the RAP tax that benefits our parks and trails. So to me, I can support this for the following reasons. One, it's a sales tax, which I think is the fairest. Two, we're already paying it anyway to other cities. Three, people get to vote on this. It's not really a council decision. The people get to vote whether they want this or not. And then I think it would really benefit, because we have people all the time coming and saying, we need better maintenance of the Highland Glen Park. We need better maintenance of our trails. Don't get rid of our trails. We want them better maintained. But we don't have all the funds to do that right now. So I can support this, even though it's a small tax increase.
And I would echo similar sentiments. I see this as a way to mitigate a future tax increase, property tax increase.
Keep us from raising property taxes.
Either delay it, or when it does come, the requirement would be less, because we're getting this money. So that's my personal point of view. And like you said, it's the residents that will get to decide on this. And in the city survey, they indicated that they were in favor of this by over 50%.
You're right. I forgot that point, mayor. Yes, so I think it was around 60, if I remember correctly.
Yes, likely, or very likely, or likely, it was over 50. It was the only, because we ask a bunch of different tax-related questions, and it was the only one that that people had any interest in, so.
Just one point, as you're considering the final ballot language. Kim, you mentioned other cities. One thing that I've learned from other cities, as Lehigh's been looking to do this, we've been talking... been talking with them, they've made the comment that be careful for what, you know, what you indicate on your ballot, because it does lock you in for ten years. So, if council's absolutely comfortable with this and wants this to be, we're, you know, we will move forward with this, but it, it will lock us in for ten years if voters approve it.
But, I, I would just say, given the cost of building Mountain Ridge, we could spend all the ten years on completing Mountain Ridge. And I think our, our capital improvement list is over a million dollars' worth of capital improvements, if I remember correctly. So, I, I.
There's plenty there to spend, yes.
Existing needs, let alone future.
Yep, nothing with this.
So, ready for motion, looks like it wants to be a star.
So, if you're happy with the, sticking to just recreational, you can use the motion on the top. If you, if anyone would like to make an amendment, you would draft the amendment to add the other categories you wanted.
I'll make a motion. I move that the city council approves a resolution as presented.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Motion by Kim, second by Kim. You are a star again. And then we'll start with, I don't know, am I on Tim, or no, Kurt?
Yes.
Brittany?
Yes.
Scott?
Yes.
Kim?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, that passes unanimously. Next item, minor subdivision, final plat, Chase subdivision. You'll notice the language in the agenda says that, we'll consider requests by Millhaven Development for approval of the proposed one-lot subdivision. My understanding, based on our discussion from Kelly, is that Dwayne Chase is the property owner, and the reason Millhaven is requesting the approval is that they're representing Dwayne Chase on this particular motion. And that is, Millhaven offered to do that as a convenience to, to Dwayne, but it is his property.
That is correct. Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, members of the council. This is the general vicinity map. On the left side of the image, or the west, that's the hollow subdivision, and then on the east side is the Hidden Pond subdivision, where most of the residents have commented today, and also at Planning Commission, lived. And just to clarify, this property is not in a recorded subdivision, that's why on the parcel map, you'll see that there is a dividing line halfway through. And Millhaven Development has, does have an agreement with Dwayne Chase, and they're taking care of this minor subdivision, which the minor subdivision approval, because it is just one lot, for three lots or fewer, for those that don't know, and we do the preliminary by code, we do the preliminary and final plat approvals together, just to make it quicker and more convenient for the developer, when it's not much to review, really. And another thing to mention, there is an existing trail easement over the private property, which I'll show in illustration in just a moment, that was dedicated to the city by the property owner in two thousand and two. And the proposal is to relocate the trail to be on city property, which again, I'll show that in an image in a moment. This is the one-lot subdivision, it's the plat. If you see on the left side, which is actually north, along ten-two-fifty north, there's that, there's about a hundred and twenty-five square feet that's being dedicated as public right-of-way, and that's just to line it up with the hollow subdivision for the road for ten-two-fifty. It is in the R-one-forty zone, and based on acreage and frontage, it does meet the requirements for the R-one-forty zone. The lot comes out to be one point four eight acres, and it does, the access is from ten-two-fifty north. And there were notices sent out, it's not, oh, the public hearing for the Planning Commission, that was the notices that was sent out to the property owners within five hundred, five hundred feet, and then just our standard noticing for this meeting as a public meeting were also sent out and posted on the state and city websites. And the Planning Commission, on July twenty-seventh, held their public hearing, there were several citizen comments, things relevant to this one-lot subdivision, where the relocation of the trail, as well as some concerns regarding the wetlands adjacent, or on the east side of the trail, and wondering if this lot would have any landscaping requirements. And so, to, just to address those concerns, this illustration, so this is drawn on the Hidden Pond subdivision plat, so those property owners that live to the east of the trail. What you see outlined in blue is a twenty-foot trail easement, and that is city property. If you can, I just turned that right off. That little text box on the right side of the image, the top arrow is pointing to where the trail is located currently, it's like that light blue dotted line, and that is what is over the private property owner's land, and so the proposal is to move it to the south, directly on city property, just lining it up, going directly towards the sidewalk. And then, the, the red lines on the left side of the image is just showing the wetland boundary, and so it's just showing, showing that this one-lot subdivision does not include any of the wetlands. The property owners that have the wetlands along the ways of their yards do have fencing and landscaping requirements that prohibit them from putting fences in the wetlands, this property will not have the same restrictions. Because it is just a twenty-foot corridor, for fencing, they will be required to do the four-foot solid and then the twenty-foot open, when we talk about, oh, four-foot solid, two-feet open, I apologize, six-feet tall. And everything with landscaping, retaining walls, this property owner, whoever purchases it, will be subject to what is just stated in the development code for the R-one-forty zone. And then I'll, I'll address the other lots of the plat amendment in the next item.
So, going back to that previous slide, there will be a sidewalk along the road there, right?
Yes.
So, that's where people could walk if they, or they could just cross the street.
Yes, that's correct. Like, obviously, their driveway is gonna come on to ten-two-fifty north, but that sidewalk will be widened, if you, if you're familiar with it, on the north side of ten-two-fifty, where the trail goes into the sidewalk, it's widened to kinda act as a trail, and so that will just connect into where this trail would be relocated.
Okay.
If that makes sense. And the Planning Commission did recommend that the city council accept the findings and approve, and approve the proposed plat with the following stipulations, which are just our standard stipulations with the city engineer, and fire marshal, so just approving the plat before it's recorded, and several plans.
So, when this is, if, when and if this is approved, then Mr. Chase could build a home there himself, or he could sell the property to somebody else?
That is correct.
And have them develop, or he could build a spec home and then sell it, right? So, all those things are possible.
Yes, that's correct.
But he couldn't subdivide it?
He could not, which is why we're here with one lot, because he hoped to have two, but it was just to explain that it's not possible there, because of the lack of frontage. There's about a hundred and sixty, I think it's actually a hundred and sixty-eight feet of frontage after that public right-of-way with the hollow subdivision was dedicated, which the minimum for R-one-forty zone is a hundred and thirty feet of frontage, so you'd have to have two hundred and sixty along there to be able to have two lots, which he's far from it.
Hey, Kelly, it says all public improvements, including the city trail. So, by relocating that city trail over onto the city property, who is paying for that portion of the city trail then?
I'm, I'm glad you brought that up, just to clarify, that is the burden of the developer to pay for, so that's, that's part of their agreement.
And then what is a setback from his fence to that trail?
Honestly, I'm trying to think of where the trail is within the twenty-foot easement. The fence can be right along the property line, I'd have to get a surveyor out there to know exactly where the property line is versus where the fence, or where the trail is, because it's twenty feet wide, but the trail's about ten feet wide, to my understanding.
So, within that twenty.
It'd be a few feet off, I can't tell you exactly.
So, if our trail was just two feet off the property line, he could still build it on the property line, and there would be two feet between the, the trail and the fence.
Even they require five feet on each side of the trail?
That's for purchasing, this is already private property. The only, at least in the development code, what is stated is just the restriction of it being the four-feet solid and two-feet open, if it's less than a forty-foot wide corridor, which this is, so, at least by the existing development code, that's all that can be made.
Now, explain what you just said, you said a forty-foot corridor, so the trail is twenty feet, right?
The, the easement is twenty feet wide, twenty feet wide, yes.
Okay, so what's the forty feet? I'm trying to misunderstand something.
So, if there was forty feet of open space or city property, then that wouldn't be required of them, but because it's only twenty feet wide, it falls under that regulation or requirement of having to have the two feet open. If that makes sense?
Yeah.
So, to the south of the, the twenty-foot easement, going back, can you go back a slide?
Yeah.
Or to, to the east, those are also individual property owners?
Yes.
So, there's no public land, at least in, on those, that property?
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't start getting wider than the twenty feet until you get to about, well, lot eleven, or wider than the forty feet, I apologize. Once you get past lot eleven, which, I mean, those lots have the wetland boundary right there, so they couldn't let up a fence anyway, but.
Wait, which lots have the wetland? So, the Chase subdivision doesn't have any wetland, no conservation easements in there?
The, the wetlands are, it's this boundary, if you see on the backs of like eleven, or nine, ten, and eleven in Hidden Ponds, and then it keeps going.
Okay, but, so then twelve, thirteen, fourteen have none?
What, no, sorry, no, twelve has a little bit right here.
Okay.
But thirteen and fourteen, it's just the trail easement that's right there.
So, their fence lines then can go up to two feet of the trail also?
Yeah, I mean, there was a resident that mentioned CCNRs, I'm not familiar with if they have any requirements on those lots without wetlands, but.
We can't have, those houses cannot have fences.
Okay.
I'm, I'm on a lot.
Okay, you know, could you?
Do you want to come up?
Yeah, because we record this, and we have to identify who's speaking, so.
Yeah, this is Trevor Lucas, so I'm, I live at lot eleven, and so, in our CCNRs specifically states that we can't have fences, to kind of protect that, that open space feel. And it's true that kind of, a good chunk of the back of our lot is designated wetland, which we couldn't do really any, any physical structure on, but yeah, that, we have a fence requirement, a no fence requirement.
So, for the whole subdivision, on the, for the, on the west side of your property, you, or any part of your property?
Correct, so we can't, on that, on that west side of our property, we cannot have a fence, which is interesting, because Chase is who did our original development, right? So, he was the one that put in those rules in the first place, yet he's not wanting to abide by them now.
Wait a minute, was that, was that for Dwayne Chase? I know this one.
Okay, yes, you may.
I give all the wetlands to the city as part of my agreement.
Step to the mic, please, and, and yes, tell you who he is.
Say your name.
Dwayne Chase. When I decided to do the Hidden Pond development, actually, I had to involve the Corps of Engineers, and there was a little puddle about eight square feet there, and Mr. V. Hill from the Corps of Engineers came and declared that that was wetlands. I wish I'd taken my Kubota tractor and just put a shovel full, or bucket of dirt there, because there's no water going down there now, and hasn't been for years and years, but anyway, declared it wetlands, otherwise the property line where that trail is, instead of jogging to the south and west, it would've gone kind of more straight like that, it would've been less property that these people would even have, but if they're complaining about not having enough property because it's wetlands, I don't get that.
Okay, thank you. So, so, anyway, we're, we're, I'm just being gracious and letting you talk, this is not a public hearing. Okay?
Counsel.
Can I, can I clarify one thing?
Yeah.
So, the gentleman that lives in lot eleven, and that, so, no one in, in Hidden Pond subdivision can put fences up along the west, even those that have the trail right in their backyard almost?
By our code and by the approval, they can't where the wetland boundary is.
Okay.
We do not regulate where there is no wetlands.
But lots twelve, well, I guess twelve couldn't either, but thirteen and fourteen could put a fence up.
But according to.
By our development code, yes.
But they have CCNRs.
But there's CCNR, I, I just wanted to clarify, because I don't understand.
That's not our purview.
So, they're gonna have a trail kind of right behind their lot, but they can't do any fencing?
And we've had a trail there for years.
Yeah, okay.
Well, they haven't had a trail there for years, because it's originally up above.
Well, no, I think it comes in, doesn't it go down?
Well, it's only.
All, all of this is existing until right about here, it switches, so just parallel to the sidewalk, it's, I don't know how many feet off the sidewalk it is. I walked it a couple days ago, I think it's like five.
So, Kelly, what have we done in other subdivisions? Have we let individuals within the twenty-foot corridor build right up, or put a, they could put a fence right up to the trail, or?
Right up to their property line?
Yes, we don't have any setbacks away from the trail, the only regulation we have is regarding the design.
Okay, a question I also have, one concern I have on this lot, is this is on the ten-two-hundred, ten-two-fifty, is the, this is on a hill, and so you have a sightline view, has the, Andy, has the engineering looked at this for safety situations? Is, is they, as they come out of this subdivision, are they gonna be able to have access and be able to view, be able to pull out and be safe as they come out of this one-lot subdivision?
Well, you're, you're kind of, I guess to explain it, you're, you're kind of in the bottom of the dip, right? On this one, and so the road goes up e, each side, and you're kind of in the low point, but you're in probably, you know, about the flattest area that you can, as far as to see there. We haven't given it a specific analysis for the driveway particularly, but in a general sense, you know, I don't think there should be an, an issue, but we're certainly willing to look at it in detail as, as part of the final, you know, final evaluation, if there's a portion of the property where we need to say, okay, the driveway needs to be on that side, because that's the, you know, the safe side, but there wasn't a, a red flag in our, you know, in, in our early reviews that that might be a concern.
So, the other question is, I look, going to, I believe it's the west, that's gonna be in the hollow subdivision, I believe that lot, we kind of put some stipulations that they couldn't have certain type of, you know, vegetation to make, you know, to block a view site. I, I'd probably recommend we do something here on this lot to make sure our view site, you know, even from the hollows, because they're gonna have to look as they come out of that, the exit there in the hollows to look down, we need to make sure this extra one-lot subdivision doesn't cause any safety concerns in the viewing, or even for the, the Ben Chase lot, we want to make sure we have it as safe as. So, you're saying it can be on our preview, which, where they put their driveway, if we're saying, hey, that needs to be on the, the bottom east side for, for viewing versus being up a little bit, so they can have a, so we could put that as a?
You're talking about the north, well, the roads to the north of the property, right?
Yeah, I think to, to, to summarize what I believe you're, you're getting out, it, we could, as part of our final review, look at the site distance for the driveway to ensure the driveway's placed in the safest location for the lot. Ordinarily, we, you know, we wouldn't restrict driveway locations other than where there is an observed safety condition, but as part of the final, final review before recording, we could look at that.
That's not something that we would cover in this, on this decision, right? Because we're not, we're not doing a plat review, we're just saying, we're creating a lot, one-lot subdivision.
You're creating a lot, but if that is a concern of the council, I don't think that'd be inappropriate, out of the condition that, that the driveway, driveway, the driveway, the site distance for the driveway be evaluated, and any commensurate restrictions that are found be placed on the plat to ensure the driveway's in a safe location.
Okay.
That, that would be fine, and it wouldn't be our intent to overly restrict where the driveway can go, other than if there's a. That would be fine, and it wouldn't be our intent to overly restrict where the driveway can go, other than if there's a condition found, as you noted, the corner lot on the hollows has some clear sight restrictions, so that you can see around that corner, 'cause it kind of makes a bend there, so, you know, we could, we could look at that, just to make sure that that doesn't extend to this point.
Let me ask you a question, Millhaven's kind of sponsoring this, although it's a Chase sublot, do we have a representative from Millhaven here that can kind of tell us the...
We do, and look what we decorated just for him to come back, Todd, you should thank my wife for decorating.
Your star.
Todd Train, Millhaven Development.
That hurts.
So, the reason, so we, Millhaven, we sat down with Dwayne Chase, because there were several reasons we, we came up with the agreement with him to help him with this. Millhaven actually owned the street dedication in front of his property, a, a good portion of it, he can't sewer his lot, so we did a sewer easement on that furthest, it would be lot fifteen, to accommodate this lot, so he can get sewer up. Then if you know the property, it extends very, very far to the south, and so if he were to develop without us, it's basically a very, very long skinny lot that, that would go back into, al- almost down into the wetland hollow area. And so, we sat down with Dwayne Chase and came up with a win-win-win situation, where we felt like we were cleaning this up, and giving him the things he needed to develop a one point five acre lot, and then we would retain some of the property behind and just put it into other lots, so we don't have a landlocked parcel back there that's not useful at all. So, we signed the agreement and, and told him that we would pay for all the engineering and run it through the process for him, so that's the agreement, so...
So, let me ask about the trail, 'cause I'm still a little bit confused, because in the past, we approved many to finish building the trail farther south as a city.
Correct.
I think originally it was about a hundred and seventy-six thousand, I understand it's gonna be more, but, and yet, we've talked tonight about this trail which exists, but the developer's kind of responsible for the trail? Well, I, just explain, I just don't quite understand that.
Okay, you want to bring an area up?
Yeah, just kind of explain the trail.
Let me explain the existing condition, I mean, the, the existing trail exists, it goes all the way along Highland City property, and it's not an easement, it's actual ownership.
By the city.
Yes, and then it, it's, it's kind of low down in there, and so it chases across Dwayne Chase's property, up to the higher end, and then crosses the road. The intent is, is not to have a trail right through the buildable area of Mr. Chase's new lot, and so we will come back and just reconstruct that portion of trail to go up and tie into the sidewalk, and, and so it stays on...
So connecting the trails, you're gonna do it through the sidewalk?
Correct, yep, and so now, the, the trail system one hundred percent is on Highland City property and not across, across private property, and, and the hope is to abandon that easement with this, with this plan.
So, but other than that, you're not gonna do any improvements to the existing trail?
Just, just rebuild that one portion.
That one portion, okay, that's what I wanted to clarify.
Yep. So, Mr. Train, as, as we look at this, you know, there's a reason probably they did the trail, they kind of curved up and there was an easement there, what type of droppage are we gonna have from the road to now going into this trail area, and what's Millhaven's plan to build that up, or to, you know, make, make it a safe transition?
So, we currently have a design that's going through review of engineering, it's, I can't remember off the top of my head, Andy, but I believe it was a five percent trail, so that is, I mean, the trail down below, as you extended to the south, there's places where we're hitting eight percent, so it's a little bit steeper, but we tried to keep it at about five percent grade to go up and tie into the sidewalk, that is my recollection, I don't remember exactly, but I think it was five percent is what that design was, so... We've, we've talked with the neighbor to the, on that, that corner, we, we tried to several times, but we were, we, we actually met him at planning commission and, and stepped out and talked to him, so we're working with him on how he wants to see his landscaping, because right now, his landscaping is down near the bottom of the trail with some walls, and if we build the trail up, it, it leaves kind of a hole there, so we're working with him to see what he wants to do with his landscaping, to make it, make it benefit him as well.
Now, it appears the city's abandoning an easement or giving up an easement, what value is the city receiving for, I mean, 'cause right now the trail comes and there's an easement, what value is the city receiving to abandon that easement, is there any monetary value, or what's the value the city's receiving?
I, I, I see the value of the city in this, and it really comes into play in the next agenda item, 'cause there is a lot of landlocked property back there that is no man's land, and as, as you know, in Highland, what happens to private property that is landlocked and no one walks back there is, is you get encroachments, and there's, it's, it's just cleaning up a mess.
But doesn't Millhaven benefit by making larger lots?
It, we do.
I'm just, I'm just, I'm just, I think it's a good question we need to ask the city, we're abandoning the easement, what value do we get for abandoning that easement?
You, you get a trail on your property.
I mean, I just...
Instead of private property.
We saw it come across several easements in the last couple of weeks that we paid a lot of money for, so there might be some monetary, and I'm not, this isn't just a Millhaven issue, I'm just, I just think we have to be careful, as we give away an easement, there might be some value there that we, that we need to make sure we're being...
Easements are expensive.
Well, I guess my question is, is if we're rebuilding the trail and you have the trail connection on all city property, how are you giving anything up?
Well, right now, we have...
Where the easement is for the trail.
But we, so here's, you know, so, Mr. Train, as we look, the easement right now would probably prohibit this to be in a buildable lot, because the way it is with the trail coming across, I'm not, and, and so it really kind of benefits Millhaven or Ben Chase to now get rid of that easement to make this a marketable lot. And, and I understand you're, you know, you're going, hey, we're gonna put the trail here, but the trail comes across and it's pretty close right, that, it was just a question I'm bringing up for council, if it's a concern that needs to be addressed.
They are dedicating some right of way for the road, if you remember, an earlier picture showed that their property went into the road, see where that shade is?
Well, and if you look at the Millhaven plat, the, the Millhaven plat owns all of the frontage that currently is ten two fifty that we're dedicating, and that's the point, is we're trying to clean up some property messes in here, dedicate the property to the city for the right of way, get the trail back in the Highland City property ownership, it's, it's just, a lot of things have happened in the past with the history of these parcels, and we're trying to clean it all up, and yes, Millhaven is benefiting from this, but we are paying for all the engineering, dedicating the property, and dedicating easement for sewer so he can have this. He is, he is benefiting, getting a buildable lot, and Highland City benefits in cleaning up all of the dedicated roadway and getting a trail in their property, so it's a win-win-win.
To, to the west of that little shaded triangle, that formerly was, or is, some of that land is Millhaven's property, is that correct?
No, she, yes, who's doing the mouse, Kelly, see what Kelly's, we, Millhaven actually had all of the ownership of ten two fifty.
Oh, all of it?
All of it, the entire road.
So do you want to maintain it? I'm just being facetious there, I'm just saying, hey, that sounds familiar, I'm just gonna maintain it.
I don't remember you being, this being to other developers.
He's not just kidding. Holding a grudge.
You know, we're required to dedicate the roadway, I guess we'll hold on to it if you'd like to, like us to.
No, no, Todd, I recognize, but most developers have to dedicate the roadways that are in their development, so it's not...
Right.
So you're dedicating that, and then Dwayne Chase is dedicating that little shaded area as part of this?
Correct.
So is this road dedication coming in with this plat?
That little piece is.
Just the one on the Ben Chase?
Just the one, just that small piece, we've already dedicated the piece out in front of his lot, that was in front of his lot from the hollow.
So, Councilman Osler, I'm, I'm just curious kind of where you're going on that with the...
With the easement and the value?
With the easement and the value of the easement, because to finish this trail farther south, as I understand, the city was going to pay for that, were you suggesting that maybe the developer paid some more towards that, or what were you thinking?
Yes.
I thought you were, but you didn't state it, so I just wondered, what were you thinking, because that trail, to finish it, has become quite a bit more expensive for the city.
What, I, I'm not, Scott, you mentioned, I think we had budgeted one seventy-six or something.
One seventy-six, but I've heard rumors that it's gonna be more.
Is, is it something, why is it coming in more?
I don't know, I, I was just told that, maybe you can comment it, Nathan.
That'll be on these, next council meeting.
Yes, so I'm just, I think you're wondering if, if the, we couldn't require the developer maybe to help us more on that trail or something because of easements, if that's what you're saying?
Well, I, I just see that we have, we have an easement right now across the property, there, you know, as we've noticed as a council, as we went through, and specifically in a, in my subdivision where we've had to go buy some easements, and there, we look at the value of those easements, as we go give up an easement, there's value probably in that easement to give up to help that individual, this, this easement we're having to give up allows out to be a buildable lot with the frontage, and I'm just saying, and I'm not, you know, it, it's a hard situation, you know, you have a, a developer that's here, there are landowners that's here in the city, but you, you know, you do look and go, okay, is the city getting what, what, what should, you know, we're, we're here to protect the residents, we're, we're the stewards that are here to protect that, and so I'd be open to other council members, what they feel on that, if it's something we need, need to discuss, or if they're okay with the proposal as is.
Let me just, before I sit down and she, she comes up, um, the...
I'm not...
Okay.
Go ahead.
Well, the lot itself, the, the easement goes along the frontage, it, it still would be considered a buildable lot as is, if you leave the easement on there. I believe that, that trail easement sits within the front thirty feet, so it'd be the front thirty foot setback anyway, it's not impacting the buildable area, it's just, you'd have an easement across its property that has nothing in it, so, why, why keep it? Because we're, we're rebuilding the trail in the city property where it really should be, keep the easement on the plat, but what good is it to you, ever?
We don't know, we might need a sewer line there sometime, we never know what we need.
Okay, you, you, you had something to say now.
My name is Amy Lucas, my husband was up here, we're in lot eleven, so kind of going along with what he was saying, you know, I mean, if you, the next item that you're gonna talk about is that other track of property behind that's on the, that's on the other side of the trail, so what about if, you know, him saying, Mr. Osler saying about they're giving up the easement, what if you have them make a setback on the rest of the trail on that other side, so that they can't build all the way up to that line? Because what's gonna happen is, if you've looked back there, you have our side where the trail is, and you have all of that open space that we can't build, and they're gonna have a corridor with a wall on that other side, and you're gonna lose all the open space feel back there, so what about requiring the builder who's here tonight to make them, make a setback there, so that there is some space on the other side of the trail?
Thank you.
Nathan, so this lot is not in part of this subdivision, so it's not subject to their CCNRs, is that right?
Correct.
Would it be fair to ask them to be? No, can we ask that they have the same fencing requirements?
Yeah, and if you want, that's up to you, but that would be a private thing that they do, it wouldn't be something in our code that would, that we could require, be just in a, something, a concession that they would make. You know, Kurt, to answer your question, what we, you know, one of the concerns the council has always expressed is, is trails and trail easements on private property, and that's what we would be remedying, so, you know, you dealt with open space issues for a long time, and, and that's what we'd be fixing, so that's what we get as a city out of it. Now, once again, Nathan, what do we get out of, as a city? We, we no longer have a trail and a trail easement on private property. But, but, I'm just, just pushing back, but we have sewer easements on private property, we have, you know, if we start, I'm just saying, we have a lot of easements on private property. I know, but we just spent a year doing property disposal on open space for this issue, right? But we weren't moving trails, we weren't, I mean, I'm, I'm not following the same, same logic here, I just, my, my, I'm just bringing up, as this now becomes a buildable lot, the value of this lot becomes by moving, moving the easement, there is a value there, I'm just bringing up as a council, as something we feel like we need to discuss, if not, we, I'm okay to move forward, I brought it up as a, as an item for discussion.
So, let me ask, we had the resident just ask if we could stipulate that the setback goes farther west of that trail, is that something we can stipulate as a council, because I think that's actually a good suggestion, in my opinion.
Well, I mean, yeah, 'cause you're doing a trail that's supposed to be an open space conservation easement, and you're gonna have fence lines up to two feet of that trail, it's just a safety issue for me, I don't know.
There's nothing in our code that we, that would allow us to do that.
The other thing I do want to clarify, just because of all the kind of alleyway fence line comments, is that this, for, where the six foot fence starts, it does have the thirty foot setback from the property line, just like every other property, and then when you're in front of the thirty feet, that's when it drops to three feet high, if they want to continue it up to fourteen feet from the curb, so I just wanted to clarify that piece, it's not a six foot wall that goes all the way up to the property line along the entire trail.
What you're saying, they have to be thirty feet back off the road?
Yes, for six, well, from the property line, for it to be six feet tall, thirty feet back from the property line.
So if they want to go two feet up to the trail, then what does it have to be?
Well, when we're talking east-west, there, we, we don't have a stipulation for that, like, we allow people to have it directly on the property line.
Mayor, is it okay if I ask the Millhaven representative, maybe, as there could be something we can, and I don't know if it's, we need to continue this and, and talk offline with them, or if it's something we can visit with them about tonight?
You can ask, you can invite Todd to come back up and ask him questions.
Todd, you...
Like Nathan said, there's nothing in our code currently that would allow us to require the property owner to not be able to build a fence on his property line.
Correct, is there any flexibility?
Regardless of where the trail is within the easement.
Yeah, if, if, if the city is amenable to remove this easement, would, do you feel like, you know, Mr. Train, that you'd be, you know, we've heard from the residents there, would there be any flexibility in putting either, you know, a restriction that they have to maybe be ten feet back off that property line before a fence can go there, or anything that way to help us with some of the concerns that's been raised?
That is not a, a, a decision I would make anyway, I mean, this is, this is Dwayne Chase's, so I'm just gonna let him answer that question, so...
Okay. It might be just interesting to know the history of the, the trail, when I developed Hidden Pond, at the very end, Barry Edwards, the city manager, told me that they would not approve the subdivision unless I would allow them to put the easement along my property, I didn't want it across the front of my property, it was supposed to jump over ten two fifty into Anne Reinhardt's property, which she would not talk to the city at all about anything, she owned property on the other side, north of ten fifty where the park is, and I did also, I gave the road and my part of the property to the city, doing the development, and, but Reinhardt, Mrs. Reinhardt would not talk to anyone about the city, so I agreed, in order to get my subdivision approved, to let the city run that trail across the front of my property where it's been for twenty years, and it, so it's...
So that was before Mitchell Hollow Park was developed?
Well, I think so, I don't, can't remember when Mitchell Hollow Park was developed, we moved to Orem in two thousand and three, but, yeah, I think the subdivision was finalized around two thousand and two or so, so... And my understanding is probably why you put the trail in, is because it was an open space subdivision that you put in, correct? Well, the trail, yeah, I had to give that, the, all that open space, I think it's four or five acres, that used to be a pond there, doesn't fill up, I don't think anymore, you people that live there would know more about it than I do.
Well, you might have, just talk to Kurt.
But, yeah, so I gave the open space and the trail going north and south, it wasn't supposed to go west across the front of my property, so to me, it's kind of ludicrous if somebody said, you should pay the city to get rid of the easement, the city made me put it there twenty years ago against my will, but, you know, that was part of the subdivision. And it's hard, you know, we're just dealing with what we see now and what we have, is there any flexibility, you know, you've, you've heard tonight, and, and I think as a council, I'm concerned, as a council member, having a possibility of a fence fairly close to the trail here, you know, the residents that are there, they're, they're trying to ask if there's some flexibility, maybe, you know, yeah, you can have the property, but would you be willing to put a stipulation that the, there couldn't be a fence like ten feet, you know, it has to come off, ten feet off the property line for a fence line, or things that way to kind of, so that trail corridor keeps open, and that would be for us, we feel like we've kind of maybe negotiated, you know, for some value for that easement? So from where the trail is now, the... So from where the trail is now, the city, the trail's about ten feet wide, and then the city owns another five feet on each side, don't they, roughly?
I don't know if it's exactly five feet.
That's, we don't know if it's two feet right there or not. I thought it was that twenty-foot easement, so if the trail's ten, there'd be five more on each. Anyway, if you're saying, would I be agreeable to have a fence setback further than the five feet or so? So it's, let's assume the city owns the five feet. Where your property line's at, we put a stipulation, they couldn't put a fence within, you know, it has to be ten feet off of your property line along this trail corridor. And then I would feel that, hey, that was a good trade, that, okay, we're giving up an easement to help you get a lot that's buildable, and now we're preserving some of that open feel as you walk that trail. Is that something amenable for you?
So Kurt, just for clarity's sake, according to Todd, he can build on that, whether the trail easement is there or not. So it's buildable with the trail easement there. So to say that in order for him to have a buildable lot, he has to get rid of the trail easement.
If you, if the easement that the city has on your property, is that something, so, you know, if you wanted, is that something you'd be amenable to? I would rather not say for sure at this time. I'm not sure what that would look like. I probably won't be the person to build on that lot. I don't know whether they would want a fence, but they probably wouldn't want a fence right next to the. Well, and that's what we're assuming. They probably wouldn't want a fence right next to the trail. And so if you worked with us going ten feet off of that, where your property line's at, we know that we're not closing that trail in. You know, one of the concerns is having a very narrow trail corridor in that area.
So Kurt, are you saying ten feet off their property line regardless if the trail was eight feet from their property line? Are you saying?
We don't know tonight where the trail's at. We don't know if it's two feet, five feet, eight feet. We don't, but.
So you're saying, you asked him to give you ten feet regardless of where the trail is?
Not giving, he's just putting a restriction, that you can't put a fence.
If you put a fence, then anything on the other side of that fence, if it's very small, is not really useful.
But that's up to the property owner if they wanna put a fence there. We're, you know, we're not requiring the property owner to put a fence. So they still could have that, that ten feet all the way up to the trail.
So, can I ask a point of clarification? So, I mean, we're talking about setbacks for fences and different things right now. But when the city had that compromise between Bow River and Country French Estates, they put an eighty-foot no-build setback. It's now down to forty-two feet. And we're not talking about no-build here, we're talking about fences, but it seems like that was a compromise that was done. And I think you're just asking to maybe have ten feet on the west side of that trell before they put a fence up. And I mean, the city stipulated that in the past, why couldn't we stipulate this? Is there some legal reason we can't do that? 'Cause we're, we're making, we're talking about not your property, but the, your piece of property that's in the back that will be deeded over to Millhaven. And so we're just saying, on those properties that make their properties bigger, could we put a fence setback a little bit there just to make the trail corridor wider? And that's, I think that's the concern of a lot of people. So, I don't know. Is it legal for us to, can we do that? Stipulate a wider setback?
Let me answer it this way. There's nothing in the code that allows you to do that, to impose that kind of setback. There are numerous setbacks set out in cities' code regarding accessory buildings, athletic courts, et cetera. There is not one for a fence like this. You're imposing, you'd be imposing a ad hoc requirement. Consistency-wise, there are numerous other trails in the city that are fenced in like this, and the council has been with designating and surplusing open space going up to five feet from the trail in other portions of the city. So, legal-wise, I don't see what basis to require this. The, the requirement on the subdivision of the, the next door one, that is a private restriction. That is part of their CCNRs. That was not a city-imposed requirement. I don't know, I don't know where you'd find this requirement in your code to impose.
If we're worried about safety, you're making the narrow corridor here, and we're worried about safety here.
The city has already made a legislative decision that putting a fence up next to trails are fine in a general manner. That is fine, so long as you meet the normal setbacks from the front of the property, you step it up, and if you're within a certain amount of feet, the bottom four can be opaque, the top two feet must be somewhat semi-transparent. The council has made that decision through ordinance for every other trail.
But now, now.
This is an administrative decision, Kurt.
You've now forgot what we were talking about. They have an easement across the front of the property. We're asking if we remove the easement, is there a consideration that if you, would you give the city if we remove the easement? And so this, this is now, we're, we're talking about that value for the easement to be removed.
You're, you're asking the, the property owner to give up ten feet of property where he's not required to do that by code, and, and now what's gonna happen, if, if this were to go through, is, is people are gonna go in and put up their fences ten feet off, and now you have this unmaintained corridor along the trails, like we do all over, that now it's gonna be a fight with residents, because you've required them to set their fence back. They actually own the property. Instead of saying, "City, why don't you maintain this?", now you have all these property owners trying to come down the trail maintaining something, 'cause their neighbors are complaining that they haven't maintained. It's just a nuisance, a complete nuisance that you're asking for. There's codes in Highland City Code that, that allows residents to put fences next to the trail, but leave open space above it to make it feel a little bit more open and more secure. That is what your code is. Now, to ask Mr. Chase to dedicate ten feet of property to make it feel more open, there's nothing in the code that allows for that.
Mr. Chase, is there anything that you see as value for us to remove that easement? I mean, 'cause right now, we can keep the easement there, we still can put the trail in. It doesn't, 'cause the trail's gonna be on Highland property. I'm just, does that make sense? It's, so, you know, really for the trail, it doesn't affect what we're doing, but do we wanna remove the easement, or is there a value for us to remove the easement on that frontage? Is there any value, and what would you see is the value that might be able to happen there?
The nuisance to me, but I suppose if you don't, if you don't wanna remove the easement, then don't remove it.
Is, is there, is there a value to keep the easement without a trail on it? Because there's, you can't do anything else with it other than the trail, and if we have the trail now rerouted where it really should be on Highland City property, what is the need for the easement at that point? You said sewer. You can't put sewer through that easement. That's not the original intent.
It's a trail easement.
It's a trail easement. Yep. The deed specifically calls out a twenty-foot wide trail easement, so it's.
We could keep the trail there if we wanted to.
Right, but once again, you have a trail on private property where it shouldn't be, where we're rebuilding a trail on Highland City property where it should be.
When you're saying it shouldn't be there, we have an easement to have a trail. So we, we have the right to have the trail there. You know, so when you keep saying we, we have.
Do we want the trail there's the question?
That's probably the question.
And like Todd said, if we build a trail on our property, then responsibility for the trail corridor is really clear. If we have it on private property, then we end up with similar issues that we deal in open space areas, except we just created a problem. So I, I have no vote in this. I think this is, I, I, unproductive. We're trying to create a problem rather than solve a problem by saying we wanna keep the easement. Well, I, I just, I don't see that it's adding value to the city to create a problem rather than solve a problem. And I'm trying not to be inconsistent on this, and I appreciate the comments that have been made. I don't think it makes logic to keep this easement there in the front of the property for the trell. I agree with that hundred percent. I just want a point of clarification, because Councilwoman Rodella said that they could build that fence within two feet of the trell, but yet the city ordinance is, I mean, what we've been approving in open space neighborhoods is at least five foot from the trell. I mean, are you gonna follow the five-foot ordinance? Because you just told us we need to follow what the agreements we've done in that. So I don't understand the two-foot, five-foot. Seems like the fences are gonna be at least five foot away.
Correct, and, and currently, it's fairly close. We don't have it surveyed beyond his lot going to the south. But right there, where we're rebuilding the trail, it's gonna be five feet, ten-foot trail, five feet.
It's not in our parts of the city.
Yeah, it's gonna be, it's gonna be centered in the trail.
Well, and the people have their CCRs, so they can't put a fence there anyway, 'cause there's been a trail. So I understand that. I, I think we've been talking about farther south, where we're gonna adjust the plats so that Millhaven gets more property along there. And I think there's some concern that people can build a fence within two foot of the trell. And I just wanna understand that, because I don't, if it has, if we're being consistent, it has to be at least five foot.
So if you go further south, there's already a city, a city fence on the property.
Right.
That is where the property line will stay and, and will not change. So there's places where you can go down there. It probably meanders around corners and gets a little closer than five feet.
But it's generally five foot plus.
That is, has always been the intent. Now, do contractors, are contractors perfect on how they build these trails? No, but the intent is always, when we have a twenty-foot corridor, to put a ten-foot trail centered in there.
So Todd, are you aware, she did your survey, that the trell is right there on the, the property line? You mentioned it, it got fairly closer. You aware if that's where it's at?
You can see right there. In, in places, it's actually wider, and you can see it's further to the, in this section, it's actually further to the east. So you have almost ten feet there. But like I said, it, we're going off the parcel map, and that's not accurate either.
Did you guys, do you have a survey on it? I mean, were you guys able to get a survey and see how close the trail actually is?
The original hollow survey did not cover Dwayne Chase's property. We had to go back and just do the front piece, and then we used all of the plats to, to fit the back pieces that you're gonna see in the next agenda item. But it, it's, it's not going to be exact, but the idea is, is that that existing fence is on the property line. And if you walk it, you'll see that there's places where it meanders a little bit and gets closer. Two feet is extreme, because that means that you've got eight feet on the other side, and I think if you're going to, but in this situation, where you see the trail, that is not accurate. That's just looking at county parcels. Does that make sense? The county parcels aren't perfectly accurate. You have to have a survey done. But in this situation, you can see that we have to rebuild a portion of that. It will be centered right in that twenty feet.
So is there, where's the fence, is the fence, where's it start? I, 'cause I've walked the trail. Remember, there's a fence on the right? Are you saying that the fence will stay intact, and where the fence is, is where the property line is?
Currently, the fence is very close to the property line, all the way down there, Mr. Dwayne Chase's property. Anywhere it touches Hidden Pond, it's actually very accurate.
So Kim, what's been your experience? Is that fence far enough off the trail that we shouldn't have a concern? Have you, was you walking?
I mean, the fence that they have right now is just a wooden fence.
Just the three, three-rail fence?
So as property owners start building, are they gonna do their own fences, or?
Whoever buy Mr. Chase's lot, I'm sure they're gonna wanna put up a side fence.
Yeah.
Further south, we don't know what they're going to decide to do.
Because it does come off the hill.
Because it's, it's steep, you know, they may leave it natural. We don't know. We're just trying to clean up ownership. To tell you what they're gonna do, I have no idea. For them to just put a fence clear down at the bottom, it makes no sense, 'cause you can see their property right over their fence, 'cause it's that steep.
So just to summarize, Rob, and correct me if I'm wrong, there is nothing in our code that would allow us to put or require a stipulation on, on the owner as to where he can put the fence other than on his property line, and other than in areas where the trail corridor is less than twenty feet, that you have to do the four-foot solid, two-foot partial see-through.
Correct, whatever's.
Whatever's car called.
The current code for fences.
And in our motion, I don't think we're removing the easement. Am I correct on the, on the approval, on our analysis, on our findings? I don't think it removes that easement. Is that correct?
If the plat is approved as proposed, it will be recorded, and it gets recorded over previous titles. So it will record over the easement and effectively abandon it. It's, 'cause we're gonna record this parcel, this, parcel will become a lot, and it will be designated with the easements that, whatever's not shown on there are removed going forward. So, so in other words, if the city council desires that he keep the easement across the frontage, we need to put it on the plat as an existing easement. But the hope is for Mr. Chase that we would remove that, since the, the idea is to put the trail in the, in the city property.
So the city could say, we would keep that trail easement there, and then what that would limit him or a property owner from doing is building something on top of that, right?
But it's in the thirty foot, so we couldn't build it in it anyway.
So there's no, essentially, it would just be, they could landscape it, right?
They could, they could landscape in that thirty feet, right?
Correct.
Okay.
So you're, you're saying you'd like to keep the trail?
I, I, personally, I wouldn't, 'cause I think it creates a problem. You're, you're talking about the trell in front of the property.
The, the trell that's in front, the easement that's in front of the property.
Yeah.
So you, what the council is talking about, to my mind, is just keeping an easement for no purpose. And, because it is better to build the trail, and it's at, the landowners' expense, not ours. But to build that is a better solution regardless of what we do with that easement.
Correct.
So we can choose to keep an easement for no purpose. Is that what the council wants to do? Well, I'm not sure that's an agreement amongst the council to keep that easement in front. It doesn't make logic to me. But I, I think what I'm hearing more is concerns about fences being so close to the trail. Isn't that what I'm hearing? Down farther south, and maybe that's not part of the discussion here, but that's, I guess, that's my concern. 'Cause I, I think it doesn't make any sense to keep the easement in front of this property. But I just kinda wondering if we're just understanding better how close fence lines can be to the trail as you go farther south. And that's, that's kinda what I'm just trying to work through in my mind. I, I think it's crazy to keep that easement in front. Why would you do it? You know, it doesn't make any sense to me.
Right, and all, and, and all of, yeah, and all of the, the recent plats recorded in Highland, all of the requirement has always been a twenty-foot easement, a twenty-foot dedicated access. That gives five feet on both sides and a ten-foot trail.
And trails do meander, because they're not built perfectly.
A little bit here and there, but the idea was, is not to go bigger than twenty feet, because then you have property that you're maintaining that you don't want to
and can't. Andy, do you have?
There, there is one advantage that I wanted to raise. I know there's been a lot of discussion as to the city, as to what's the benefit of the city, straightening the trail that we're talking about on the west side. The one advantage to us is, right now, as the trail descends, the slope along the front of Mr. Chase's property, when it makes the bend, the bend's fairly sharp, and it's a little trickier for us to get some of our equipment down there, and make that bend, kind of at the bottom of the hill. So there is an advantage to us to just be able to, you know, come in on the road straight.
Go straight out to the.
If we have to bring something a little bigger there, I mean, that, that is one advantage to us. And then Todd, I did wanna ask one question. I was, and this pertains to farther down the rail, the road with the, with the split-rail fence. I texted Josh during this meeting, and his understanding was that, as far as that split-rail fence went on down the way with the other lots, that there's actually an equestrian corridor that, that's connected with that. And if I'm understanding him correct, that, that might actually be on the other side of the fence. Do you know how that equestrian corridor that was supposed to fall out parallel, that ever went, and where that fence is in relation to the property line?
Extending further south?
This is down in front of your other lots. He was telling me that there's an equestrian corridor. I was just thinking, is the, is the existing split-rail fence on the property line? That's what I was asking.
I, I believe it is.
Okay.
But I, I can double-check that. I know it is along this section.
Yeah, okay.
Further south, I, I could be, I could be wrong. I can talk to Josh about that and figure out where he's talking.
Just, he was thinking that there was actually maybe even a little more space off of there, just, I was offering that, that down below, there may actually be a little extra space, you know.
Well, there's definitely more space as you get down there, 'cause it opens up. And then there's one other section that will narrow up again, and then it opens up to the hollow portion, the seven acres that Millhaven dedicated. So most of it is wider open. It's just a few of these corridors where you actually have private ownership on both sides. And if we maintain the twenty feet, then we have the five feet on both sides and, and the ten-foot trail.
So, let me see if I understand this again. I'm just trying to understand. So the developer, Millhaven developer, you want the trail easement in front of the property eliminated, and if you do that, you will fix, I mean, you're gonna fix some of the trell there on the north end. But we, Andy, would be responsible for the things you just suggested as a city to the town.
They're gonna pay all the expenses.
Okay, so it's more than clear to me just how much trell they're going to actually fix. We're gonna eliminate the easement. We're gonna eliminate the easement, but how much trail are you actually going to be working on to improve?
For this section, it's just the piece to get up to the road.
That's what I thought.
Yeah.
So they're not paying for the rest of the trail.
They're not paying for the rest of the trail that's associated with the hollows. This is just strictly, they're paying for the portion, what, what it takes to reconfigure the trail such that the easement could be abandoned.
Right.
They're paying that cost.
So your suggested improvements though, as you were talking about going down, changing slope, everything, that would all be paid for by the city, correct?
No, that, the, what I was talking about with, uh, are, are, are we talking about, are we talking about, when you asked that question, let me clarify, are you talking about the portion that's in the hollows? Are you talking about the portion that's adjacent to Mister Chase's lot?
Well, I, I was wondering about the portion adjacent to his lot because his lot goes all the way back and we want to move some of that into Mill Haven. So the trail that already exists along there, you're talking about some improvements, I understand.
No, no, I, only, the only improvements that are proposed with this are they're gonna demolish the trail that, that currently descends the hill along, uh, Mister Chase's lot.
I understand that.
Then, then they're, you know, as you go south from there, they're gonna remove about, I, I'm gonna say a hundred to a hundred and fifty feet of trail, cause I don't know the exact distance either here. And, and then they're gonna rebuild it so that it slopes straight up to the road. So the advantage that I was trying to bring up to the city, for the city, cause there had been some discussion on, well, is there any advantage to the city in the new configuration? There is one advantage to the city and that is that if we have to get a bigger piece of equipment down there, right now, we've got kind of a tight turn at the bottom of the hill. Uh, you know, and with them building it, just coming straight up to the, to the road, if we have to say for some reason, we gotta get a larger piece of equipment, uh, you know, a big tractor or something, we can come straight in off the road and descend the trail and we don't have to try to make that hard corner at the bottom of the hill. That, that, that's an advantage to us. But any of the, any of the expense associated with reconfiguring the trail so that it now matches what they're proposing, they are paying entirely. Because the reason why that's different than over at the hollows, over at the hollows, uh, we don't have a trail.
Right.
In this case, we have a trail and we're whole. So anything that it takes to make us whole again with their proposal is their cost.
Okay, I just wanna clarify that, cause I wasn't sure if we were talking about improvements along the existing trail, except up at the north end.
Yeah, just, just at the north end. I think at the other, for the rest of the proposal, the trail that's along there, trail is just proposed to stay as is.
Okay. And then Mister Train, you were saying that you would work with the neighbors that live in lots twelve, thirteen, fourteen, cause you're gonna bring that trail up. It's certainly behind fourteen. They can't have a fence because they're CCNRs, but you're gonna have the trail elevated up.
It really just affects the one corner lot.
Number fourteen.
Yes, the corner lot is the one that it affects and it's basically creating a hole where he has a fire pit down in there. Yeah, he has a fire pit down in there that is basically gonna create a hole. And he felt, he, he was asking what we can do to flatten it out and I said I'd be happy to meet with him. So I have his information, he has mine. We're going to get together with him. That cost is gonna be a burden on him because right now we can build a wall, just a, a stone wall similar to what he already has, cause he's actually built up a little bit from where the existing trail is.
Right.
We would just be going higher with that by putting the trail up higher. And so he's just debating on what he's gonna do with his lot. So, but if, if he fills that in and makes it level with the trail, he, he may ask for some, some material from, from the development to see if he can fill it in.
Seems to want to work with you, okay?
Yes, yeah, very nice.
Okay.
Just to address a slightly different issue, with, with the fence restriction on the other side, with the subdivision under the CCNRs, uh, again, that's not a, that was a private thing. Presumably, we don't know what their CCNRs specifically say, but they could, there's almost, there's always a way to amend CCNRs. I don't know how viable that is, but if the fence concerned, that, that's a private concern and presumably there's a private way of remedying that. And then they would be subject to the same code rules that, uh, Mr. Chase would be for that property.
So currently on the property without subdividing it, the property owner could today build a fence all the way south, all, even along that narrow section if he wanted to today. So you're not chang-
Correct.
By dividing this and, and creating a, a one-lot subdivision, you're not changing any rights that they don't currently have today.
Correct. Correct. But the fence rules stay the same whether there is subdivided lot or a unsubdivided parcel.
So it, it's possible today to do what? Anyway, they, they could do that today whether or not we divide this or not.
Any other questions for me?
Have we asked enough? We promised you.
Any, any other discussion amongst council? Is there someone that would like to do a motion?
I'll do it, just to get a star. Um, I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the Chase subdivision plat subject to the three stipulations recommended by staff.
Is there a second? Motion by Kim, second by Brittany. Okay, I'm keeping to my promise. You guys are stars. We'll start with Brittany.
Yes.
Scott? No. Kim?
Yes.
Tim?
Yes.
Kurt?
Yes.
So that passes four to one. All right. Now more of the same, Kelly.
Thank you, Mayor.
Second verse.
And members of the city council, um, this is another request by the Mill Haven Development regarding the hollow subdivision, um, for a request for a plat amendment. This, just overall vicinity map, as you can see, that's the hollow subdivision plat. And then what's highlighted in yellow is the property that's proposed to be added to lots twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, and thirty-one, just along the backs of them. Uh, this is the rest of the Dwayne Chase property. As you can see, there's the one-lot subdivision that was just approved. Um, and that's just the residual of the parcel that goes down south like Todd was talking about. Little bit of background, the hollow subdivision was approved, approved a few months ago, a few months ago by the council on February sixteenth, twenty twenty-one. Um, in the staff report, you did see a legal note. That was Rob that wrote that and I'm gonna turn it over to him for him to give a quick history or update as to where we stand on that.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as you're aware. And we had comments earlier today from, uh, the Packards who are here with us. Uh, the preliminary plat that was approved, um, that was back in September, November, something, twenty twenty last year, uh, was challenged and appealed to the city's appeal authority. The city's appeal authority upheld, uh, the city's decision approving it. Um, and then it was appealed again to district court where it remains pending. There was one oral argument where the court indicated it was gonna uphold the preliminary plat decision, but was withholding judgment and on a challenge to the final plat. And there's been no final ruling either way from the court on that.
So Rob, Rob, before we get going too fast, on this last motion, there was something that, if we would like to revisit, there was one item that I, I think was important to add that we did not. Can we come back and revisit since it's in the same council meeting if the council votes to do that?
Yes, you can. Sorry.
So the reason why I'd like to revisit is we forgot to add something about the driveway site distance.
Oh, correct.
That for the safe conditions. And so I, I would like to make a motion that we bring back, uh, the last item to be able to add that item onto that. So that would be my motion.
I'll second it. A motion by Kurt to revisit the item that we just passed, a second by Scott.
Wait a minute. Can I lately do that, cause I voted against it? I think you have to have someone that votes for it.
Has to be someone else.
Yeah, has to be someone else, yeah.
I'll second it.
So second by Kim. And I'll just do an, uh, just an oral, all in favor. Say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That passes unanimously. So now we're, we're discussing the, the previous motion on, on item number seven.
Did you get what we added was for the sightline view for the driveway needs to be approved, you know, on that last subdivision?
So. So what, can we describe what? If Kurt, if you wanna say move that we?
We, we moved that the drive, that would, that the, the site distance for the driveway is put in a safe condition for that lot.
So you, you would need to make a motion to approve the subject, this Chase subdivision plat subject to the three stipulations recommended by staff plus?
Okay, I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the Chase subdivision, subject to the three stipulations recommended by staff and include that the driveway site distance that would be on, on the plat be a safe condition approved by the city engineer.
I'll second.
So a motion by Kurt, second by Kim. We'll just do, uh.
Can I ask a clarifying question from the city engineer? What does that mean, Andy? I mean, it's kinda general when you say safe. What, what does, what, would you think that means?
You say.
Okay, so what, what I understand my instruction is, is that the developers' engineers to study the sightlines on the roadway and to place any restrictions on the plat as to the areas that the driveway can be placed, uh, to allow it to access safely and not, uh, be obstructed from view from the, uh, traffic as it comes through the road.
Can you give us some examples? What, what normally happened?
Uh, the outcome of this, the outcome is, uh, you know, there may be a portion of the lot where the driveway can't be. You know, it may be, and I don't know if there is or isn't at this point, but the, you know, the outcome of that analysis would be, it might be that the, uh, uh, westernmost forty feet are, are too close to that curve and you can't see. And so you, you know, there might be a restriction on the plat that would say, uh, driveway can't be placed in this area.
Would it be any landscaping restrictions? Could you, would that be part of some of that? Or do we need to do something with landscaping restrictions also?
Uh, it, it could impact that similar to the corner on the hollows.
I just want to make sure not big trees blocking that view or anything that way. Or landscaping that would be blocking for a safe, you know, drive, or even for the, for the hollows as they come out to make sure that they haven't built a tree there, but also make sure for the hollows, we don't have a safety issue.
Right. I mean, it, it, it could result in some, uh, landscape restrictions for the front yard. I, I think, I don't know what it will entail. Uh, what we will ask is that developer have their engineer analyze the site distance and configuration of the road and provide us the, uh, site distance that needs to be maintained for that access safely on the road. And then as a result of that, uh, whether or not that does result in some restrictions on the lot or not would be yet to be seen. Uh, I'm contented that there, uh, is an area that the driveway can access safely. So it's just a question of, does, does there need to be portion of the lot that either is restricted as you note, uh, from, uh, vegetation of a certain height or for location of the driveway?
Thank you.
So would they make any recommendations on the speed of the road or anything else? Or just?
They're just gonna analyze what the road is.
Okay.
As it sits today. And, uh, and they're gonna say if the road is what it is, uh, you know, how can this be accessed safely from this lot?
Well, that's helpful, cause I just wondered what it meant when we stipulate it needs to be safe.
Yeah.
I appreciate that, Scott. I thought that, to me, that was actually a good discussion to verify, clarify. So that was good that you brought that up.
Thank you.
I think we already have a motion and?
In a second. So, and I will just take a voice vote on this. So all in favor?
Yes.
Yes.
Any opposed?
Um, I'm gonna vote yes, now that we've added this stipulation.
Okay, so that is now unanimous vote. Okay. Back to Kelly.
Back to Rob.
And back to Rob.
So just as the update, um, there's still a, a court case pending regarding the approval of the hollow subdivision and whether, uh, the final plat will be able to be challenged. And then depending on that decision, uh, the court will rule on the validity of the city's decision regarding that. Um, we bring this up just because this is an amendment to that plat. But as I indicated earlier, uh, when, uh, Mrs. Packard came up, I don't see this as actually impacting anything related to that actual approval. This is only amending four lots and it doesn't change any of the infrastructure, the roadway, none of the alignments. There's no new density, no new lots being created out of this. So I see that this amendment doesn't really impact the final plat decision. It just attacks a little bit of actual property. It doesn't really affect the court case in any way, really for, against any, any particular side. Um, so to that effect, my recommendation is if the council believes the plat, other, the plat amendment as proposed otherwise, uh, is appropriate, you're, you're free to approve it, uh, without a concern regarding the legal impact of the court case.
Are we only approving this minor change? Are we still, we're not reapproving the whole plat again, right? Cause it's just a amendment of what's proposed before, it's not the whole plat.
Exactly. You're not reapproving the whole plat. You're just approving whether these four lots should be amended slightly.
Thank you, Rob.
So Kelly, can you go back to that previous? I have a question.
Yes.
Um, when we're talking about the, the trail corridor, it looks to me like as we move south, that that might actually be at some, it will be at some point forty feet that the city owns.
Yes, it's about, it's honestly like right about here, right before this plat amendment takes effect, that it becomes greater than forty.
And at that point, if you were building a fence, it could be a solid six-foot fence.
That is correct. Okay, this is the subdivision plat that was proposed. Um, as we mentioned with the original hollows plat, it did have sixty-eight lots. With this plat amendment, it still follows the requirements of the R140 zone. If anything, it lowers the overall density by increasing the size of four lots. Um, it is adding in total one point five-three acres to the overall subdivision. And again, that's just the residual of Dwayne Chase's property. Um, and as mentioned by Rob, this does not change any infrastructure or public improvements that have been approved or are working on approvals by the city engineer. It's all, the only thing that we're looking at is the additional square footage to these lots. And this is the vis- the visual that we included in the staff report, similar to the one for the previous item. Um, on the left side, that's where you can see, I apologize for my drawings, but, um, there's lot twenty, twenty-one, twenty-four, and thirty-one on the top. And that's just kinda showing how it lines up. It does line up and goes, it lines up or it butts the trail, um, that city property. But like we mentioned before, it does exceed the forty feet wide and therefore they'd be able to have six-foot solid fences in accordance with the development code. And also to clarify, these lots do not have any of the wet ones in it either. And that's what that red line is showing. It doesn't cross the trail on this portion either, just like the Dwayne Chase lot. And we did send out radius notices to all the property owners within a five-hundred-foot radius. Um, because we have received no correspondence or disputes from owners of the plat, um, there will, there is no need to hold a public hearing for this item. And, uh, we as staff just recommend that the city council accept the findings stated in the staff report and approve the final plat, um, subject to these two stipulations, which are again, just our standard stipulations that we use for plat amendments.
Questions, council?
I'd like to ask one question.
Yes.
I know this has to do with the slope of the land and different things, but can you explain why lot thirty-one goes up behind lot twenty-five? Why didn't they just extend twenty-five back?
You know what? That was a private matter. Todd, I mean, I can explain it, but probably best for you to explain it.
I just think it's interesting.
So the same gentleman owns both lots. Uh, the mother-in-law is building on twenty-five and didn't want extra property. And so thirty-one just took that into his lot instead of adding it to twenty-five. So they're gonna build a smaller home for the mother-in-law and then, so it's family and that's what they wanted to do.
Does that cause future problems?
I, you know, no, because you, you just have ownership. Same thing with, uh, I think it was lot eighteen. Which, which one was it on the far north end? So it, it has a little bit of a flag as well because the other person just wasn't interested in the property. You just keep, keep in mind, this property is not terribly valuable, cause it's a complete slope. And so some of them wanted it, some of them didn't. We just wanted to clean it up, so it was owned by someone.
So Todd, would you mind giving us maybe an update on? So Todd, would you mind giving us maybe an update on how many lots you have? Are several of them, are they reserved, or are you guys starting to build on them? What's kind of the, give us the status of?
We're, we're, we just finished utilities, we're finishing up the final bacteria test, we're pulled today, so we should have all of the utilities complete. We'll be starting to slip curb next week and paving shortly after that. We can't pull the building permit until then, so.
So you've sold some of the lots though, based on what you?
Most everything is sold.
It's all sold?
There are a few left.
Wow.
No, I am not the home building department, I am the single employee in Millhaven Development, so I don't know exactly what the status is as of right now, but I can tell you most of them are gone, so.
And is anticipation that they'll be built in this next year? I mean, are you doing the building projects, or did you just sell lots?
I, I just developed the property, and then we have a whole handful of people that do everything else.
But you're building the homes, I mean, you didn't sell them as lots.
Correct. These will all be Millhaven homes, yep. Just the bottom half on the south side of Canal Boulevard was sold to a different developer, so. Any other questions on the properties, Scott?
No, I just was curious.
Curious, yeah. It is kind of an odd shape, and that was the reason, so.
Any other comments, questions, discussions by council? I promise I will limit my editorial comments. Which, Mr. Packard, very brief.
If you could go back to that slide that shows where the, oh, back, yeah, that one over there. See, those, those cul-de-sacs go up there, and the natural road that could have gone, that was up there, could, would go right along there and out to ten to fifty. And those cul-de-sacs could connect in as it would follow, that's the reason, and but you you give that property to allow them to take it, then that would cut right across their backyards running that street. But that street would have allowed those things to go up, to go up there and to follow the general plan. So I just have one question. Do you, do any of you on the city council believe that you are obligated to follow the the general, the the public uses to conform to general plan?
So Mr. Packard, I'll, I'll just let you ask the question, they can respond to you offline.
Okay. Okay.
Okay. So any other comments, questions? So go back to that, Kelly, just for clarity. So Mr. Chase owns all that property surrounded by red and then the yellow.
That is correct.
And, and they're just dividing it where they're dividing it, so he ends up with the buildable lot, and then the rest of it.
And then he's giving the rest to Millhaven, yes.
I'm, I'm sure he's selling it to them, but for some price, but anyway.
I move that the city council accept the findings and approve the hollow plat amendment, subject to stipulations recommended by staff.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Kurt, you get double star, because I forgot to star you.
Yes.
So you're a star times two. And a motion by Kurt, second by Kim, and we'll, we'll start with Mr. Scott Smith.
Yes.
Kim.
Yes.
Tim.
Yes.
Kurt.
Yes, I thought you were starting with me at the first.
Brittany?
Yes.
All right. All right, on to item eleven, or nine, sorry, and that's Tyler.
Weren't happy to let Kelly take this, if she'd like, but. Mayor, council, thank you, appreciate the opportunity to, to speak with you this evening, discussing a, a topic that we have previously wanted to provide you with, an update of where things stand with regard to the American Relief Plan Act, or ARPA for short, talk about potential uses, or begin the discussion, continue the discussion there, and then, based on our conversation this evening, staff will research and, and report back in, in the coming sessions, the council sessions here. So hopefully we have some, some consensus here towards the end of this meeting on areas that staff can research. By way of background. The total allocation that Highland has or will receive is roughly two point three million dollars, that figure there exactly for you on this slide. We, we did receive the first half earlier here about a month ago, and the second half will be made available at least one year after that point, but we would anticipate that being available, we can apply and receive those funds in one year. Based on population, Highland is designated as what is called a non-entitlement unit. What that means simply is that our funding passes through the state, the state of Utah, and it also reduces the, the amount and frequency of reporting that we have to make to the federal government, which I'm grateful for. Our, the funds must be obligated by the end of twenty twenty-four, calendar year twenty twenty-four, and spent by the end of twenty twenty-six. When Congress and the president outlined this program, specific purposes were to support public health, address negative economic impacts of the pandemic, replace revenue that, that local governments missed out on as a result of the pandemic, provide premium pay for essential workers, or investing in infrastructure. I'll point out that the federal government is updating on a weekly basis the guidance with, with regard to this funding, and there appears to be some flexibility in, in how these funds can be used. For example, an update here just over a month ago addressed specifically the opportunity to, the potential to improve outdoor spaces or parks, and, and those would be a qualified expense.
Did you just say that parks would qualify?
There is, there is an FAQ that suggests that that would be the case, yes.
What, did you say, what was it?
A frequently asked question.
Okay.
FAQ. And that's new, and that's actually good news for us, because if we want to, I, I did not think that that was going to be possible, so I stand corrected based on their updated interpretation.
And it is ever-evolving. It's, it's something that we receive blurbs on here a couple of times a week, and it's, it's becoming quite the task to keep up to date on all of those. Our hope here with the conversation that the council would have this evening is that if there's a desire to, to, to consider putting that towards a park or otherwise, we can further vet and provide in two weeks and in a month, as we, we come back to the council, the latest information. I would anticipate that there's going to be more updates on how these funds can be used, so, but a great question there, Kurt. Turning to, as I mentioned in the staff report, there's also an opportunity that's recently become available. We, we did talk about this here before. The state is offering a local match grant. The legislature set aside fifty million dollars, and the, the criteria, you see, there are four criteria, but three specifically that are more specific, to deal with housing insecurity, lack of affordable housing or homelessness, to deal with costs incurred in addressing public health challenges, to provide necessary improvements or investments in infrastructure, specifically water and sewer infrastructures, what the legislation indicated. And there is also a catch-all at the end, any other purpose authorized under the, the ARPA. So based on this information, that wasn't new, we reached out, and Councilwoman Rodella also was, was helpful in contacting some folks at the, the governor's office of planning and budget. We didn't get a whole lot from them, but confirmed the information that we received before. They indicated that there are folks on, from their staff as well as on the league staff that are part of the, the, the evaluation committee, who will determine which applications receive funding, so that, as well as some of the requirements are being determined right now. They did share, and as was available in the staff report, excuse me, the timeline for this local match program. So the, the application portal will open two weeks from yesterday. That's an online portal, and applications will be received through, through mid-September. Their committee, there are a couple of legislators, some representatives from the governor's office of planning and budget, as well as the league, will review, and they will report to the league's executive committee in October. Applicants will be notified, and funding is anticipated to, to be made available to cities that receive these awards in mid-November. So although the city does have some time per the federal guidelines to obligate and to spend the funds, this match opportunity that does bear consideration adds an element of urgency here to the overall process. I will point out also within this timeline, the, there is a webinar the state and the league will be putting on at the end of, of August. So the application period opens, we'll actually have our next council meeting the day after, in about a week following, then this, this webinar will occur. So we're getting bits and pieces of information there, wanting to queue up as much as we can, and have decisions made and conversations occur that will facilitate decisions there with regard to this, this matching program. So with that, recommend that council have a discussion here with regard to the possible uses of the funding that's been allocated to the city. And then, based on your questions and feedback, we will research the, the guidance from the federal government and as, as it becomes available from, from the state, on how these funds could be used, and if possible, receive a successful match. And then we'll report back on the seventeenth, and then September seventh is about a week before that, that window closes, so we would anticipate there on the seventh, asking council to make a formal decision whether or not we should apply for that match, so. Welcome all of your feedback on, on the uses for, or the potential uses for these funds.
Commissioner Rodella, did you get any feedback on what type of items they'd be looking for, for this fifty million dollar match?
So basically, they just said that the criteria has not been posted yet, but from kind of what I gathered, it was more of populations under fifty thousand that they were looking at.
Under fifty thousand?
Uh huh. So maybe more rural cities that would be in need of it. But again, the guidelines still hadn't been absolute yet.
Okay. I mean, here's a big idea. I'm going to say, let's assume, you know, as I asked about the parks, you know, and this brings in the fifty million, brings in the money from the, that we, we receive them from the COVID. What about if we said, okay, we have a donor, whatever the donor provides, the city would match with this fund, and we would also ask that, we'd go with that other and ask for the third match. Does that make sense? Okay, we're trying to do it so we can stretch it as much as possible. We get a donor, let's assume we, maybe we're saying that a pavilion naming rights is seventy-five thousand dollars. Well, if the donor actually came in and gave thirty, you know, thirty-seven and a half, the city would match the other thirty-seven and a half, you know, and maybe, you know, we could stretch it out and try to get the, the fifty million. I don't know if that's something to be looking at, maybe they're trying to get something more specific that's really benefiting a little bit more in the community after that fifty million, that's what I was trying to get guidance on.
I will say that one of the, the criteria that they did share with us, that they're looking for a return on investment, that, that might be a return, a return that they'd be looking for possibly.
I mean, it's, it's three times again, I mean, really, because we got a donor, you got the city matching, and they would match, I mean, it's, it's heightened their, and I'm, and I'm just thinking big, you know, that's just one suggestion, maybe.
So is this eligible for counties and cities then to, to apply for? Because county's got some COVID money too, right?
Yes. And, and one of the committee members who will be adding applications is from the, the county organization as well.
So they list in this public health issues, and we use the CARES Act, which was concerned with public health, to build three restrooms in the city, because certainly having sanitation facilities is public health, in my opinion. Do you think we could use some of this or apply? Because there's, we have other parks that could use restrooms, or we need to upgrade restrooms. I mean, I had a citizen complain to me today that the restrooms in the community center were really dirty and not cleaned up, and I don't know when the, you know, our maintenance staff cleaned those bathrooms, but obviously that's, they think that's a public health issue. And, and the lady that contacted me says, does the arts council have to clean the bathrooms? You know, I mean, there's a lot of things like that, so restrooms to me are a public health issue. Is that a possibility? I don't know.
And that's certainly something that we can, we can look at the specific guidance and come back with you for that.
How about establishing drinking fountains in the parks or something of that order? Is that considered public health? I, I just, I'm just throwing things out. How about putting trash cans in some of the public parks that, instead of, you know, because it seems like we could use more of those, in my opinion, because it's hard to keep the parks cleaned up. I don't know, Josh can probably make more comment on that than I can, but how about, you know, we do have a bubbling system in the Highland Glen Pond, but it doesn't keep the water clean, could we put some sort of other system in there to clean that water? Because we have to keep shutting it down, because it gets E. coli. So I'm just throwing some things out that are improvements we could make in the parks. You know, if your trails are in bad repair and an older person trips and breaks their hip, that's a public health concern. So to me, there's a lot of public health concerns that we can kind of put into that, because if you have unrepaired trails and you have someone trip on it, that's a problem.
Right. And from what I've read, the intent is specific to public health related to the impacts of COVID nineteen, but clearly there's a lot of room for interpretation in how closely connected it is to the COVID.
Now, Tyler, you were also saying, let, let me ask you this, you know, here we, you know, we have Mountain Ridge Park, we have, you know, what, two and a half million dollars, you know, put there, but we think that park's going to be about four point four million. I don't know when the city's going to get the other money to be able to finish the other part of the park. Maybe we can get some of the play, you know, the, the fields done with a, a surf soccer or something that way, I mean, that might be one option. Is it an option that we could look to go towards a park with some of the money to finish out a park? I mean, you know, you'll have some maybe, you know, I like what Councilmember Smith's bringing up something down at Highland Glen to try to clean the water up, because it seems like we keep getting E. coli, but maybe, I just think, once our one-time money we might get like this, to maybe go towards to finish a park that could be used for, you know, the exercising or the health or the things that way, is that something that this would be approval for?
It appears that there's potential, potential for that.
I mean, so I would be interested, looking to see, you know, if we could put it towards a, you know, maybe towards finishing Mountain Ridge. I mean, now, some of it, you know, we have to look to see what's, but I'm just worried that we might not have other money in the future to be able to finish off some things. But at the same time, we might not have money ever to finish the bubbler down at Highland Glen Park.
Tyler, do we have any idea how, I mean, I guess it's hard to know how many projects will be approved before you know how many are submitting, but do you have any idea?
idea about that?
We don't, haven't received any information.
By super, this ju- just bugs me. It bugs me that our national debt is twenty-eight trillion dollars and we're trying to find a way to spend it. Like, I, I understand that we need to advantage our city, but, oh, it just, it drives me nuts. Um, is there anything, when I look through their criteria, is there anything that we need that is, um, more basic, like water? We've talked a lot about our wells, is there anything else that we need that's more basic? I just wonder when they look at funding projects, if they're going to look at more basic needs first, or?
You're talking about the grants, matching grants?
Yeah.
I would guess that, and, and Rob, we talked about this today, that there are communities that, like in south, southern Utah County, that don't currently have sewer systems.
But Navajo Nation down there.
Um, that could drive some of those grants. The, the communities there could get together and say, we're gonna share our money and if you match.
Necessarily.
Um, and, and, and there, I believe there are counties in Utah that are less than fifty thousand population, and so some of those counties might come in with projects. Um, I, I, I'm guessing that the approval process would be very sympathetic to rural, less sympathetic to
Affluent communities.
Communities like us.
Yeah.
That, that tend to be affluent. I, I would guess, and this is just an opinion, our, our guess, our best shot would be doing something like water meters, where the return would be that we would use less water, but even then, I, I think our chances of getting any of that grant money are pretty low.
One thing to, to keep in mind, um, you remember water meters, mayor, and that's certainly a possibility, um, we do want to be mindful of, uh, fund allocations, so if, uh, if we chose to, uh, use those funds towards water meters, um,
You'd have to
It would not be able to offset something in the general fund, for instance.
Right, parks, so.
Right. So we'd be, we'd be obligating the city, kind of in perpetuity, to use those funds in any offset down the road in that particular fund.
Would, would it also be true, Tyler, let's just say we use this for water meters. We've put a funding source right now, we've kind of said, hey, as the bond payment for the PI system, we're not gonna, as it came, you know, we're paying off the bond, we're gonna keep that money still coming into the pressurized system, you know, that we had for the bond payment, we're using that though for meters. If we went and used this money, it's not something we could pull back out of the, the meter fund, because it's really in an enterprise fund.
Correct.
Being the pressurized irrigation, enterprise fund, correct?
We couldn't use it for a park where we may never get a lot of money like this at one time, so I, I, my, my personal view is, our chances of getting any of that fifty million are pretty, pretty low, even with our best of projects.
And that's why, is it coming back even as the match, you go, if we want to try to get our money to maybe expand, maybe we look and say, is it something, we could get some other donations, if it be even towards our Allabillys Park, saying, you do that, we'll match it on something else on the other side to try to stretch it and sanitize something, or, you know, something that way, but, I mean, I, I think, the other things, I, I think, I, I go both ways. Should we be really responsible? Is it sometime we need to go get internet? Is this, is this the time to go get broadband and try to bring it throughout Highland? Well, I, I'll be open, I have Comcast, I'm getting six hundred down, I'm getting probably about twenty up, I'm going, I'm not having speed issues, so is the market already providing what I need? I don't know if it provides what all the residents are needing, but that's something that's always come up, is about broadband. Uh, you know, this, this, this would get us probably some lines through the city if we put towards broadband, but I don't know if that's the best use.
So, I'm gonna throw out another public health issue. So, Highland City Water has not been chlorinated. With one of the new wells, we're setting it up so that we can chlorinate water. It would seem like we could make a case, a public health issue, that we would like to be able to afford to be able to chlorinate all of our, uh, water. I don't know, 'cause that's kind of a goal in the future, and, and that, we could maybe help that fund the wells, 'cause some of these wells are gonna have to go pretty deep, and I, I just worry that sometime we're gonna get the source contaminated. So I don't know, I'm just throwing that out. Chlorination, 'cause that's a public health. Certainly, it helps with COVID too, I think.
Let's call it, let me ask you with the, with the chlorination, didn't we, when we rebuilt some of the wells, that we add a chlorinator on to them or something like that?
Well, the capability to do that.
Got it, the capability, but we haven't had a chlorination. It's on the horizon, and we're getting really close.
I know, we're currently putting many away, so that when we reach that point, it'll have money be there, right?
Right.
It's in our utility rate studies. When you do sooner than later, um, but that's an issue to tackle in the next little while.
But we need to, uh, drill some other wells or, or improve some of our wells too, don't we? And, and we could put chlorinate, I don't know, I'm just throwing that out.
Has anyone heard, you know, we just had, you know, as Commissioner Bills has brought about, the federal government seems to be, you know, printing a lot of money right now. They just passed, it appears, there's this other infrastructure, are we hearing if anything's gonna even come through for cities that way, for, like, for roads or other infrastructure that they're doing? Has anyone heard of anything that way?
Not specifically, no.
I mean, it's gonna be interesting to see how that comes about.
Maybe since our children will have to be paying this all back, we should invest it in them somehow. To the parks.
I, you know, I, I, yeah.
So far, I've heard, uh, Mountain Ridge, of course, Mountain Ridge Park, um, restrooms, drinking fountains, uh, garbage cans in parks, the pond bubbling system, uh, chlorinating , uh, water, the chlorinating, um, talked about PI meters. Anything else that you'd like us to, to look into?
The mayor and I were just talking about, you know, if you have the Allabillys Park, uh, in the playground, in the Mountain Ridge Park, you're gonna have to have special modifications in those restrooms there for the disabled, and it might be, you know, apply for funding to help, 'cause we're gonna have to put in not just a playground for the disabled, but we're gonna have to have restroom facilities that they can use. And so, I'm just, maybe I'll throw that into it, I don't know.
Great. Thank you, that's tremendous feedback, and we'll, we'll get to work on, on vetting the, the guidance in that regard.
So I'm gonna assume, our next council meeting, you'll have more to share about what you've learned, so there'll be another, maybe, brief discussion item from you, or?
Right, the, the application will open the day before, so as soon as that opens, I'll, I'll be taking a look at that, and, um, that'll probably be our focus, um, there next time.
Okay. So, I'm gonna just throw one last thing in. So, we modified some of the zoning in our city for the border property, basically, um, and that modification benefits the disabled throughout the whole state. So that enabled that project to go forth, and the selling of that property goes in the Sustainability Fund, that, and, you know, you might want to just mention that we as a city have sacrificed and made that to benefit other people with disabilities, 'cause that fund does, helps not only the people at USDC, but it also helps all the disabled in the state. So, it, it might be nice to mention that as you're applying for a grant, saying, hey, you know, we may be a kind of affluent place, but we've made sacrifices as a people to help the disabled, so I don't know if that helps or not, but that's true.
Go ahead.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, any other comments from council on this item? If not, we'll close it and move to discussion items. And I, I have some things, a couple, just a couple of short things, and I'll, I'll do that after Kim and Brittany talk about garbage cans and doggy bags. So who's leading off, Kim or Brittany?
Oh, thanks, Brittany. Um, you know, at our last city council meeting, we had a gentleman come up from, um, Beacon Hills and talk about the lack of garbage cans at the parks, doggy bags, um, and it just got us thinking that, um, were there bathrooms, pavilions, there needs to be garbage cans, and also, um, I feel like our parks have a situation with overflowing garbage can issues that needs to really be addressed.
So how, how do we address that one? Like where people are putting their personal garbage in?
No, the garbage cans just aren't being emptied. They need to be emptied more, more garbage cans there, I mean, um, I was just at Heritage Park the other, a, a few weeks ago, and Brian Braithwaite was, you know, picking up trash, but the garbage cans were overflowing, so there's no place to put it. Or we were, you know, meeting, um, a resident and the garbage can was overflowing there also. So I think that's something that needs to be addressed at all of our parks, Mitchell Hollow always overflowing those garbage cans, of what we can do better there, and then also just, at parks where there's a bathroom, where there's pavilions, make sure there's garbage cans there. I don't know why that's a huge big deal.
Josh, do you wanna, do you wanna come up and, 'cause I, I believe, when we have pavilions, we have garbage cans, right? So wherever we have pavilions today, we have garbage cans, and I'm assuming wherever we have bathrooms, there's a garbage can in the bathroom. I don't know if there's one outside the bathroom.
I, I would believe the only one we don't have in garbage would be Beacon Hills with the bathroom. Um, but it comes down to placement of the garbage can, so it doesn't fill full of water, and then having it on a spot where it's secure, and then doesn't impede an ADA, any, any way an ADA, so we don't affect ADA access, but ADA also has access. So, we built the bathrooms with the minimum requirement, so we placed a garbage can on any of the concrete to the bathroom, we've now voided the ADA. Does that make sense?
Yes.
But inside the bathroom, don't we have garbage cans?
So, inside, inside the bathroom, there is no garbage cans.
So, when?
I think there's the, um, I'm trying to think of the term, the feminine basket in there, that's, that's about it, but then, inside the bathroom, we don't really have room for garbage can, I mean, we could look in to see, but there's the turning radius for a wheelchair, which makes those bathrooms, that's why they're, their size they are, so that they can fit the wheelchair, and we don't make any complications with that circle of turn in there. So other now, all the ba, all the other pavilions have a garbage can, at least one. Most of them have two to multiple more than two. So, um, currently, they're dumped once to twice a week, um, I can just throw you a few numbers, we're probably to thirty-two boxes of garbage bags. I would guess we spent three thousand dollars on garbage bags to this point this year, um, maybe a little less, it could be off a little bit, um, adding more, I mean, we're gonna have to have more help, I'm, I'm gonna be straight up and honest with you. I mean, we're, we're pretty much bare bones right now, so you gotta remember, there's only a few of us that are full-time, the rest are seasonal, um, I think we're down to four high school students.
We're down, right now, we have, uh, nine non-high school students that are on our seasonals, and we have four high school students left, so we have, uh, thirteen total. We had about twenty-five when summer started, and then the high school kids have kind of peeled back a little bit as we've gotten deeper into the, into the summer, as they've looked at some of their summer starting to, uh, come to a close, uh, we've lost a lot of them that have wanted a little time off before they went back to school.
So you're mentioning, Josh, our frequency on servicing the garbage cans is, is weekly?
Yeah, is weekly.
So, so like, if we're heading into a weekend, 'cause, you know, you know, it could be a Thursday night, they could be full, and then as we head into Friday, Saturday, Sunday, they're already full, correct? Is that, is that what we're experiencing, or is it usually?
I mean, I would say yes, and some of the busier ones, we try to hit a second time, like Heritage Park, we'll try to hit it on a Thursday, um, we'll try to hit some of Mitchell Hall. If I send someone to get garbages right now, it's about two and a half hours, just to get garbage cans, with what we have currently. So that just kind of gives an idea, not each?
So if we want more garbage cans, we just have to realize, we'll have to allocate more money
Mm-hmm.
For help, and does it need, you, would you think that needs to be a permanent, full-time employee, because that's kind of a year-round thing, or?
I mean, we try to hit, we hit them year-round, I mean, the winter time, yes, there's not as much usage, but we're still trying to hit them, because they're filling full of water. Just think about the water sitting in there with the garbage, it doesn't get pretty, so the sooner we can hit those, the better off it is. Um, and then, I mean, you know, you're gonna think about funding for the garbage cans, I mean, I'm shooting a number out there, but I think the ones we paid for Canterbury Circle were about twelve hundred bucks a piece, so you take that into consideration, and then
And those are the Canterbury Circle ones, those are the ones that are filling up with neighbors' garbage.
Yeah. So, I mean, if you're back up to Canterbury Circle, we had the totes there, um, when we switched service providers, we wanted the totes gone, because we knew the totes were being used, um, not by us. You take that park, it's not reservable, the pavilions generally for the residents that live there, so we said, we just need to go to garbage cans, 'cause it's not reserved, it's not gonna be a ton of use, it's not gonna be a family reunion, it's just gonna be pretty much neighborhood use, so we went to those garbage cans.
Did that change that people weren't putting their own personal garbage in these garbage cans?
They were putting their own personal garbage, and then complaining that we weren't dumping it enough, um, and then that kind of, we got fixed with the letter and to let them know that, you know, it's not, it's not right to use the city garbage can as your own personal dumpster as well.
So, as, as you look at garbage, you know, the other question also, as we talk about waste, is, is pet waste, are we starting to see requests for that, are we starting to see an issue in the parks with pet waste?
I mean, it's gonna be both sides. I mean, from my guys' point of view, they would rather not see the bags. I mean, if, I don't wanna get down to details, but if you think about pet waste, it disintegrates on its own. You put it in a bag and then it gets dropped in the grass, it just makes it worse for my guys. I mean, so I'll fight for my guys on that one, they would prefer not to see bags, because it's one of the nastiest things you have to experience when someone hits it with a weed whacker, and they're asking to go home, okay?
Well, you're, so if they have bags, you're saying they don't go put it in the garbage?
Yeah, I mean, there's a fair amount that never make the garbage can, or they set it there and say, I'm gonna pick it up on the way back, and then don't make it on the way back. The hard part about the pet stations is that, as I've talked to other cities, it's the using them for their, their benefits, like going in, rolling off thirty bags and taking them home. Um, I talked to American Fort today, they're at thirty thousand bags for the year on pet station. Um, they used thirty thousand for the full year last year, they're halfway through the year and they're at thirty thousand. So they just roll them off and then take them, and then the complaints come in, 'cause you can't keep them filled fast enough. And that's, that's my worry there, is that we put those up and then we can't fill them fast enough, because, I mean, it's just convenience, you can pull off thirty and take them home, and then you have them. So, I mean, that's, that's the point that we see from our side, it's just, it's hard, 'cause it doesn't decompose in the bag, it just turns into a mess that way, and they don't make it to the garbage can as easy.
So coming back to the garbage, you know, when you're saying two and a half hours for a service to go out there, you know, and I understand, you know, some staffing, how would you recommend, you know, 'cause that's not a full-time employee, I mean, I guess if we said every day we wanted to go hit all the garbages, it'd take two and a half hours, but that's probably not the frequency, I'm not sure we need it every day, I mean, but I would imagine during the summer, that a Friday and Saturday, they get filled up when they have, you know, if they have family activities or dinners in the pavilions, what would be your recommendation, how to, how to approach that?
I don't, I mean, I don't really wanna do it to a guy, but maybe the guy that's on call at this point has to do it, and we have to pay him more, that he has to work more on the weekends, that he picks up those, um, to help out with those, those weekend situations, so that we can, can make that clean, um, that would probably be the one way, um, I don't know how else.
How big of an issue is it? I mean, are we, are we discussing something smaller, or is it, you're going there on Mondays and they're just overflowing and there's garbage everywhere and it's blowing? I mean?
Um, it, it's hit or miss, to be honest with you, and sometimes it's, it's, I think it's associated with the holiday weekends, but I think the holiday weekends tend to be the busier weekends, um, your twenty-fourth, the Fourth of July, and, and pavilion rentals probably are increased more on those weekends, I mean, we still have high usage on our pavilion usage, um, regardless, but I think on the, those holiday weekends, there's just more people, and that's probably our biggest complaint, I would say, is a holiday weekend, that it maybe need to be dumped on a Friday and a Saturday to make sure that when someone makes it there, um, that there's not full garbage.
Aaron, is there any way we can add anything into, um, a waste management contract to take care of some of that? Are there like other, um, I mean, I know you can't just put big dumpsters in parks, 'cause then people will fill them up, but aren't there like those, um, it just seems like there should be a solution through them somehow?
Uh, we, you know, so our waste management contract, we pay for every, every dumpster that we, um, we have, so we can always add more, well, um, we can add more dumpsters at parks where there is room to do so, um, it's just a cost that the city would then bear. Um, we actually, even on Um, we actually, even on a couple of, at least one of our parks that I know, we actually just have a toter. Um, because that's appropriate for that location. So again, it's something we would do. But that, that would also require, like, if it's a toter, a park's employee would have to go and put it out on whatever day, you know, you have to come pick up, or the waste management comes to pick up.
But we're not then hauling. I mean, that was what I was thinking. You go to a tote. Let's say Mitchell Hollow Park, we know they're gonna be there on a, I think they're in that area on a Monday, Wednesday or Monday, Tuesday. You, you have a big tote. That's much bigger than the garbage can. And I understand the concern about residents going and dumping, but I go, I don't know if on a tote, they're gonna think. I think a dumpster, they think, hey, I can take some things from my house and dump it. I'm not sure a tote, but you might have a better experience on that. If we had something down at Mitchell Hollow or even at Heritage Park or something that way. If we could use those, cause we'd have more garbage. Maybe put two garbage cans in each of those, the bigger totes. Would that help? Cause they'd be bigger garbage cans.
I mean, it can help. I still think it increases people dumping their stuff. I mean, that's our biggest complaint is the garbage, if the dumpster's there, it's full all the time. And, um, I mean, most of the dumpsters all have a lock on them. And we try to have the smaller hole, so they don't get filled with someone's couch and everything else there. Um, so the totes, I still think we run the risk of people throwing stuff in there. But the part is, is trying to make the convenient, that we can get those dumped. And that they're not sitting there all day, waiting for the garbage to come. I think it works really well with the totes that have their own sanitation system. Where we're contracted out, we're kind of, you know, we're, it's out there until the guy shows up. And then we gotta have someone go back and put them back. So.
I guess, I'm saying right now, we have issues with overflowing trash cans. We've had residents ask for a trash can at Beacon Hills. It's a park with a bathroom. It should have a trash can there. So for you, I'm asking, what is the solution? Not what is it all that we can't do? What can we do?
Okay. And, and I look at Beacon Hills and I went with my scouts two weeks ago. And that was part of our services, that we were gonna take a bag and pick up trash. We picked up less than this much trash. I mean, so the one leader with me was ecstatic, how we didn't have that much trash. I didn't think there was that much trash. I mean, so, I mean, I get that people are saying, but I don't see a whole lot. I think the Frisbee Golf does a great job on cleaning up there. Um, I just, I mean, I guess we can try a tote. I, I'm just resistant, because I feel like it's gonna get, I can go down there and dump off, cause my garbage can's full, or I forgot to put mine out, type of thing. But, I mean, we could try a dumpster. I, I don't know what the right answer is, to be honest with you. So that doesn't become the neighborhood, I go and dump my stuff there, cause mine's full. And not to impede on ADA, ADA requirements and make sure that it is in a spot that we don't have someone that is ADA that can't get to it.
Would it be possible, just as an experiment even? Cause we can, we can do a tote and then if it's not working out, we can stop it, right?
Mm-hmm. I mean, could we try totes?
In a couple places where.
And I don't, I don't wanna sound like the negative guy. I just don't want it to disappear, okay? That's just, you know, kids are kids. Our cones disappear from drop sites, they're on the top of the bathrooms. They're just, that's the thing. But I mean, we can try a tote and I just don't want it to all of a sudden wander off. It got hooked to a vehicle and drove down the road. That's, I'm just being honest.
Sense to maybe try it, okay?
Have a little trial?
Yeah, I would like to try.
Is there a way to chain it down? Like, put a chain on that tote, so it's only you guys that can kinda access it?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think what we attach it to.
Yeah, I could, I don't know.
Okay.
Put a, dr- dr- put a big bolt in, in a, you know, some kind of lag bolt and with an I on the top and.
Well, what, one thing you could do is, who has, whose members of those Facebook groups up there in Beacon Hills?
I am. Awesome.
Why don't we post there and see if it's needed from the residents?
Okay. Sounds good.
If I can, if I can ask a question, just summarize with council, seems like, as I listened, there's two main concerns. One is weekend garbage. The second is Beacon Hills Park. That's where we're really focused, uh, beyond what we're already doing. Those are the two things that, that are of concern.
Yep. So try and pick up that weekend garbage and make sure we don't have those overflowing trash cans anymore. Hey, Josh, why have you here? One last question that's totally different, but I have you here. Um, you know Mitchell Hollow, how it got redone? And now there's that big mud path there. Are there plans to re-sod that?
We're trying to get to a point in agreement. I mean, they're eventually wanting to fence the whole thing off, so that you can't, um, so it's fenced in. Um, there's still some discussion of going in and out still. They've, they wanna let the dirt sit for like a, till next spring, so they can add some more dirt. Um, because it'll settle and try to make it to that point. So their thoughts are like, if we spend a bunch of money and re-sod it.
Just re-sodding that path from the parking lot to the baseball field?
They're gonna drive over it again. So their whole thought was like, we're just gonna sod that and then drive over it again and it's just gonna get ruined again. And so we're kind of, do we put some dirt down there and, and just put some road base? The hard part is, is it just get, it'll get mixed in and then there's a lot of effort put on to remove it. But there's still that construction left to put up the fence. They wanna put the rest of the fence up this year and try to get that fenced off. I mean, I, it is a nuisance, I think. It's hard. Um, we can't, the sprinklers really divide that area, so it's not like we can cut it off. Cause you got, we have sprinklers on both sides of that path. So if it turns into asphalt, asphalt's gonna get water, just cause of the design of the sprinklers at the, at the time that park was built. So there's still some construction that's gonna happen and, hmm, I don't have the best answer. I, I didn't really want them to put sod back and then just have to drive back over again. It's just kind of trying to get it to reattach and the water and all that, sure.
Any other comments, discussions on garbage cans and doggy bags? I, I, I think the garbage cans discussion is a really odd one, cause I, I do get those complaints.
Lots of complaints about that.
Yeah. Cause they, they really fill up and it's, when, when you try and help full and, and it's already full, it's, anyway. It's a tough problem. Um, okay, I had a couple items and then if anybody else on council has. Um, while, while Kim and Brittany are on the hot seat, when we met last time about the All Abilities and discussed All Abilities, there was some follow-up you were gonna do with people who had disabled children to get their input. Um, is there any progress on that?
Um, I'll let you go, Brittany, since you did let me go that last one.
Yeah, I'm gonna say, ahead of time, I second it.
Yeah, I got, um, I sent out a message to, um, a group that, that's been kind of concerned with the, um, the TLC classes at Highland Elementary. And I've got a group of moms who are excited about the idea and who are willing to give input and who already have given me suggestions. So, um, I guess I'm just kind of waiting until I have something more concrete to talk to them with. Cause it seems like just saying, what are your ideas, is, it was great and I've got a lot of good ideas, but I think we've gotta, um, narrow it down a little bit. But I've got a mailing list and a bunch of contacts that I am happy to share with anyone or who would be happy to meet with us or.
So do you see, we, we talked about having an open house on the subject of the All Abilities Park. And just to show what we had in place and then ask, like we do at, at the open houses that we hold, where you have a, a survey form, where you can provide feedback on what was shown. Um, would we do one for them specifically or would we just do one for the whole city? And make sure they were invited to participate?
I would say one, um, just general one and then make sure that they're invited and, um. Yeah, and I wondered if we should have another work session before we have, um, some kind of a, an open house kind of a thing? Just to narrow down some of our ideas, ideas and go over, um, what we got last council meeting. I know Kim and I have talked to a couple of people just about what they've done and what their process was. I know that Wes has some ideas. Um, so I don't know if that would be, uh, helpful or if anybody else is interested in that.
I think it'd be helpful to just do a, a work session before council meeting.
Yeah, I guess I just feel like this is our last big park and we've been talking about it. You guys have been talking about it and planning it much longer. And I think you've got some really super great ideas. But I think we could, um, maybe fine-tune it and learn from other cities. I know I was talking to a friend in Cedar Hills and I said, what have you done that you wish you hadn't done? Or, or what are some things that you wish you had done different, kind of looking back? And they had some good suggestions. So I wonder if it would be a good idea to ask some other cities what they've done, what mistakes they've seen or what recommendations they would have going forward also.
So do you want staff to do that or?
I'm happy to, I, staff is super busy. I'm happy to, um, I know that I'm kind of one of the ones who, who said I'd like to get some more feedback. So I'm willing to put in my time and effort to make that happen.
So when, when would you think you would have enough time to do that before we're, if we had a work session the next council meeting?
Absolutely.
So you're talking in two weeks, you would be ready?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll help you, Brittany.
Two weeks or if, um, it would make everybody feel more comfortable? I mean, I guess we need to know what, I know kind of what I'm thinking. I would need to know what everybody else is thinking. But I mean, I think this is important and I know it's a priority. So I'm happy to, I don't wanna pawn it off on staff. I'm happy to put my own time and effort into it.
So what you're talking about is you'd like more input on the All Abilities Park. So we've seen a couple of plans and different things, but you'd like to talk to some parents that have disabled children. And then you wanna talk to other cities and say, how would you have done things a little different or what have you found? So when I've done remodeling projects in my house, and the months or years later, I, I think, I wish I'd done this differently.
Exactly.
And, um, so you wanna kind of take advantage of what they've already learned?
Yeah, exactly. And then just another thing that I kind of found out as I was talking to a bunch of moms is that while an All Abilities Park is fantastic, and I think that that's, um, we should have that. I think a, a better, what was the phrase, Kim? A better?
All-inclusive.
An all-inclusive park that has, um, elements where everybody can play together. But maybe not every element is for every, for every child. Because from just people who I've talked to, by the time you're trying to meet the needs of kids on the spectrum and meet the needs of kids on a wheelchair and all of the different things, it's hard to have a park that is truly all-inclusive. So one of the suggestions that I heard made fairly often was that you have a park that has lots of elements that include, um, lots of kids. But that it has to be a place that is fun for all, all kids to play. So, but that's kind of some of the, um, the work I would be happy to take on myself. I have a friend who does a blog. Her whole, she's in a wheelchair, just to find a bit for her. She's in a wheelchair. And her graduate research has all been on, um, like going to national parks and finding ways to make them accessible while not, um, making them not enjoyable or not accessible to other groups of people. And I know that she has said that she would be willing, um, to give me some input, give us some input as well. So I'm willing to take on the work and, um, and help you guys out. And I don't think it's throwing away what we've done. I just think it's, um, maybe taking some more ideas.
Okay. So is two weeks enough or do you want the first one in September?
I can, I can have stuff either way. I.
Help me, um, clarify for me what the, um, what you want out of the work session?
Um, I think what I would like is so that last meeting, we got those couple of, of drawings.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so what I would like to do is just kind of look at that and think, um, what are the elements that we're missing? And what are the elements that we have? Or what are the things that we think people would maybe want to have? And then look at, um, just overall, does this make, just that the, the layout makes sense? And how, you know, kind of as a council, come to a decision of, do we want it to be this whole section of a park that is, um, an all abilities? Cause that's a totally different concept to think of just all abilities where everything is accessible to everybody versus, um, a park where there's something for everybody.
Yeah.
So I think that's kind of a philosophical.
That's where staff was headed more, um, was the inclusive. Cause I agree, not every child is going to be on, could participate on every element that we're in those renderings. But yes, that makes sense.
Yeah.
Brittany, like what I would like to see is, I would like to see, we've, I mean, Cedar Hills has done All Abilities. Um, Orem has done one, there's Spanish Fork. I mean, even just get a couple of representatives to come and talk to us about the pros and cons of what worked well, what didn't work well. And that's something that, I mean, if you need help, that we could grab a couple of people. There's also a group of ladies who, um, their whole, um, initiative and their nonprofit is building all inclu- all abilities, inclusive parks throughout Utah. And, uh, and, and they're, I mean, they know designs. They know you shouldn't put that right there, because a wheelchair would have to travel this much. Um, that they can look at designs as well and have them come in, talk to us about, you know, some of the pros and cons they see with parks as well. Just basically bring in experts to, you know, let us learn from them.
And then I think another element that would be interesting to talk about as a council, Wes, if you have anything to add, um, is if we're interested at all in talking to, um, donation, donors. Working with, um, the Highland Foundation. Or Kim has a contact at Larry H. Miller that she's mentioned before. So I know that, um, staff doesn't have really the, the time to pursue that kind of stuff right now. But just as a council, is that something that we're interested in pursuing? Are we interested in pursuing it, like a volunteerism element, um, like they did in Alpine when they put in their park? So, um, I guess that's kind of some of the stuff I would be interested in thinking about. And Erin, I'm happy to do, uh, whatever to put together that meeting and kind of talk through ideas with, um, you know, whoever on the council is interested beforehand to kind of make it a productive, targeted work session, so that we're not wasting your time in preparing for it or in actually being there. I, I'm not trying to make this like a thing where it's extra for you guys. I just want it to be like a super awesome park. And I wanna know from Josh too, what's it gonna take to keep it up? And I know those artificial, like the surfaces can be difficult. And I know they can be difficult for kids with, who are medically sensitive with allergies. So I just think there's like a whole bunch of stuff that people have told me that I, I just wanna process.
So what I just heard was that you, you and Kim.
We're gonna do work session. We're gonna put it together.
Yeah. I'll bring cookies.
I have nothing to bring.
Can I just mention something real quick?
Wait, yes.
So I support this idea and my oldest daughter's physically disabled. She has a type of muscular dystrophy and she's very articulate and interested in stuff like this. I, I'm gonna volunteer to help on your committee, cause you're talking about people with kids with disabilities. But maybe it'd be nice to have somebody with disabilities say, when you grew up, what would you have liked? And, uh, my daughter's an avid, actually, rock climber in the, you know, cause she's got good upper body strength, but she can't hardly walk. And so, uh, I'm gonna volunteer, cause she'd love to help you.
See, I think that would be, I think that would be great. And just creating a place where everybody feels welcome, but not like it is, um, I don't know. Um, I don't know what the word is I'm looking for, so I'm not gonna try to find it. Um, but, and I'm happy to, if anybody else has people they know who would like to have input, I'm happy to help organize it all and make sure we can have conversations with, you know, so we're not having three of us together, whatever.
Brittany, I'm, as I'm listening to this conversation, I'm wondering if it's more appropriate to do some work as a subcommittee first before getting to this council point, right? So I'm hearing you talk about a, a number of different community members who could provide some good input. And I'm wondering if it makes sense to come up with a design, you know, using all of their input and, you know, what we learned from other cities and then presenting it to council at that point.
Um, yeah, and I would probably, I would probably take recommendations about how, um, how best to, I'm not sure what the best way is. Um, anybody else?
Just be, I'm, not to be rude to council, but none of us, including staff, are experts on what is needed in an All Abilities Park, right?
Yeah, for sure.
You've all highlighted some people who have input in that area.
So Brittany and Kim are the subcommittee, I thought. They are.
Oh, we just, yeah. I'm sorry, I didn't know we had a Mountain Ridge Subcommittee too.
Well, we just, we just created.
Created the subcommittee.
For the work session. But, um, based on what you just said, I, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better the first council meeting in September to have.
But based on what you just said, I'm wondering if it wouldn't be better the first council meeting in September to have that work session.
Yeah, that gives you a month.
Yeah.
Because they're gonna, it sounds like they're gonna meet with some people and I think your point is valid. If you could gather a lot, because in an hour, it's really difficult.
Especially when none of us are experts on this, right?
See, that's the thing I love is like, I mean, there's so many things that we'd love to do and the great thing about like, you know, Utah and our cities is so many people have already done it that we can just, I mean, why try and figure it out on our own? Let's go ask experts and then from there, we don't have to do our own research. They already did it for us. That's what, I think that's my whole thing about, you know, doing something is, is asking somebody first how they did it, what they did, and then from there, what worked, what didn't work.
And I agree with what Kim said and then also I wanna do it in a way that is helpful to you guys, not burdensome to you. So any direction that you have for us about this is what would be the most helpful for us. I don't want to make you sit through, you know, hours of meetings that aren't helpful. So I'm happy to take direction for how you think it would be best to put it together and maximize our time and yours, because that's valuable.
And not to be a buzzkill, one thing that we haven't discussed though, I guess, I mean, maybe with ARPA that changes things. I mean, right now we had a half a million dollar budget, give or take, right? But maybe that changes now, so not to be a buzzkill, but unless there is some magic donor out there, we're not building Spanish Forks Park, right?
And I don't think we want to build Spanish Forks Park or I don't wanna rebuild Harvey Park. I wanna build something that is exactly what our, what our community needs and I would rather, I just wanna get it right. Only have one chance to get it right. So I know we don't have lots of magic money, but that's why I'm willing to meet with people and talk about if there's possibilities for donors or volunteers. And I know that maybe hasn't always worked out well in the past, but I'm willing to put my effort into it to try it for now.
Sure.
Okay.
So tentatively, first council meeting in September. I would just make this observation in, from just a business point of view. It's hard to focus on everything, right? So maybe we, we say, okay, here's our space constraints, our budget constraints. What can we do really good rather than do a bunch of things bad or less optimal? Than just say, all right, here are the things that we wanna be particularly good at. Because you can't, I don't think you could have everything for every age group in this, in the budget and space that we have. I would just say, one of the things maybe you should look at is, do we wanna be really good at a couple of things?
We're gonna shoot for the stars.
Yes, but do we wanna be really, really good at something? There's a value in that.
No, valid.
As opposed to...
And I agree with that. Sometimes if you have a well-thought-out plan, you will have some donors, because, you know, being the lady I was with the Highland Foundation, a year ago they sent out just a little mailer in the city thing and raised $7,500 for this All Ability Park and there was not any plan other than it being an All Ability Park. And, you know...
So if you have something specific?
So if you have something specific, you could go and say, you know, because if I was a corporate business owner, like Adobe or, you know, some of these things, and you came up plan and say, "This is for All Abilities and different things," it may elicit a nice donation.
Just reaching out to my contact at Larry H. Miller, they basically were like, "Yeah, give us your proposal and absolutely we're interested in it, but there has to be a proposal of, you know, what type of sponsorship? What are you paying for?" So, and I've even had a couple people approach me about, you know, are you guys gonna do plaques? I'd love my name on a little plaque. I think a lot of cities do little plaques on the fence or the bench or I'd love to buy a bench or, you know, sponsor the pavilion or something like that.
And I promise you Alta Bank would probably donate towards it, because they have this fund that they do for local things.
Yeah.
So, you know, I think it's, if you have a nice plan that you can go forth, it might elicit some more funds, so who knows?
Okay, my next item was, I sent an email to council about the Arvinger Day workshop for council. We were down to two days that people could do both, the ninth and the 23rd. I talked to the trust today and the 23rd works for them. The 23rd of August, of September.
Oh, September, okay.
The ninth does not. I know there was a scheduled conflict with one of the employees on the 23rd, but...
What day of the week is that again?
It's Thursday.
A Thursday.
So I was looking at Thursdays in September.
Sure.
And so 16th was out and then ninth and the 23rd were the alternatives. And the trust can do it on the 23rd. Mr. Patton, I was planning on inviting the fire chief to come to that, so that's an all-day thing on the 23rd. It's, I attended those and they're really, really good. And I think it would make council and staff be able to work, it would improve the working relationship between council members and staff. Steve Hanson said it's a thousand dollar a day deal. He's covering the cost of that. He's covering the cost of breakfast and lunch. It would be nine to five. So can I just say, we're planning on the 23rd and if, if some of you can't make it, that's okay.
What time?
It would be nine to five.
Nine to five.
And if we need to, I think we could hold it here. The disadvantage to holding it here is if we're here and staff is here, it'll be really easy to get interrupted. Right, so sometimes it's better to have things off-site. So Steve volunteered that and it's North Salt Lake. It's not too far, you know, north of their point of the mountain. It's the trust building. I've been there a couple times. But if that's all right, that's, that's what we'll do. Does anybody else have anything they wanted to bring up?
You know, Mayor, I thought maybe it'd be wise for us to talk a little bit about the plans for the fling.
Yes, good point, good point.
The parade is...
The parade specifically, so... Did you talk to Mr.?
I have not gotten ahold of Panchal Avila. I had, I will try to reach out to him tomorrow. I tried to call her and the day he didn't answer.
Did you talk to the tractor guy?
No.
No. Not to, okay.
By tomorrow night, let's make a decision. If we don't have that car...
We'll find another car.
Yeah, we'll get some McLaren or the, the people that have the fancy vehicles. So we can...
So is the plan to have the council ride or are we going to walk or...
Traditionally, the council has walked and thrown candies. Occasionally, one council member or another sat in the car and helped distribute the candy.
Okay, so the plan is for us to walk along the...
Throw candy at people, just throw candy. My instructions from Corinne were walk fast. Don't throw the parade down. So don't talk to people and...
Audrey Moore called me and says, "Will you make sure that the council walks fast? They always hold up the parade." Anyway, that will be, so the parade starts at 10, 10, or is it start, is it starting at 10?
It's starting at 10.
We need to buy a candy. Oh, the candy's already, I talked to Corinne last night.
Okay.
She's bought the candy. I'll remind, remind everyone, we need to limit the candy at the very first. We always seem to throw a lot at the first and we get down at the very end and there are tons of kids and no one's gotten rid of their candy. This is like, you know, so we need to be wise stewards of that.
Be thorough. Maybe we have somebody distributing the candy and saying, "All right, you're this far along, sorry. I'm not gonna give you more until..."
So as we work, where do we wanna meet for, to get, to get together for the parade? I mean, the car should be there towards the, in front of Highland Elementary.
I would park my car at Highland Elementary and then just meet there.
Okay.
Where is this again? Where do we meet again? Did you, I didn't hear that. Highway, park.
Okay, Highland Elementary, because that's where we started.
In front of Highland Elementary, should we say 9:30, the parade starts at 10? That way we are ready to go. I asked Corinne in the past, they've had the council try to kind of pick up wards and that. She said that that kind of was not the plan, I don't think, this year.
She, she said, asked if we wanted to and I was very amenable to her doing it, because it's been spotty with the council, because you got different, sometimes it's just two council members.
And also you're at one end of the parade and they're trying to start it and you're gonna hold it, we're down here trying to fight and you're running back and you didn't give them the wards what you're supposed to get.
Well, so let, let the council parade people do the judging and then we just be there at 9:30.
So do you want a certain dress? Do we dress western, casual?
Everyone should have, does everyone get their fling shirt?
They are in your boxes if you do not have them.
So they should need a costume. Shirt, I would just assume we'd wear our fling shirt.
Yep, so comfortable shoes and fling shirt.
I just wanted to confirm I'm driving the fire truck.
You were running.
Oh.
That might be, do, do we don't have an antique car?
He was disappointed I didn't ask last time, so I had to confirm.
So then you can drive the fire truck and throw candy at the same time?
I think I can. All the kids running towards it.
So Mayor, so here we have the parade, 9:30, in front of Highland Elementary. We'll, we'll work on the car and have it reserved by tomorrow night. Now we have, is the staff...
Information booth.
Okay, the manager in the booth, I saw a list go out. I don't know if everyone's had an opportunity to sign up for that timing.
I have my own booth, so I don't know how I'm gonna do that.
Well, that was the question I put down. I said, "I can do this time." I think it was from 5:00 to 7:30, but I also have my own booth at the, at the thing. What, what the staff anticipate we need? Is it just to have council there in the booth to kind of...
It's just to just, you're just there to, to, to help. And typically the fire department hangs out near us, but it's responding to questions when people come up or I lost my this or that.
It's a good public face, right?
I agree, I agree.
I would say if you have a booth, Scott, I would just wanna be in my booth. I wouldn't, right?
Unless you wanted to leave somebody else to man your booth and come over, you know, it's up to you. We will have boards for Mountain Ridge Park there, as we previously discussed. So a couple, a map, some potential renderings of the playground and is my plan at this point.
Okay, so there will be a set, another booth right by the...
Yeah, she just is kind of, I think, she's gonna put up four pop-ups or something for the info booth. So there'll be space for the, the Mountain Ridge Park.
The other thing I'd like to encourage the council, the arts council, and I understand we have an artist on the council that has some art on display at the community center. So we'd like to invite all the council to come over to look at the different artists and, and things that nature.
And you've got your judge for one stand.
Brittany, you still okay for 10:30 tomorrow morning?
Yes.
We're gonna go choose the city pick tomorrow morning. But just wanna invite everyone over to our council.
And Scott has a conflict of interest, so...
See if you can go guess which one's Scott's.
Wait, so booth, are we signing up for times or just...
There was, there was an email that went out from Corinne that had times set up for the different events during the week, but also for the booths. So if you hadn't seen that, that might be something that...
Okay.
And if you haven't seen it, go check out the H on the mountain. Go look outside and look at the H on the mountain.
Kurt took a really good picture.
That, that surprised me last night.
Mayor, does it turn on at 10?
I, it's, it's definitely on, it was on at 9:00 last night.
It was on last night at about 8:45, 9:00.
The dusk is when it came on. Just so you know, I spoke with Corinne. I had had a conversation with the high school principal and he told me about, Lone Peak had their little logo for the graduation night, so I called him up and got the name of the person that was doing that and then Corinne talked to him and he agreed to do that for $500. And I told her, "Well, I'll fund that out of my discretionary fund if needed." And it was my call. I just wanted to keep a secret and a surprise. That's why you didn't know. So, because it was all done and I just thought it would be a fun surprise, so... If, if you're mad that you didn't know, it's my fault, not staff's fault.
Now we're trying to figure out how we're gonna keep it going next year when the logo changes.
Well, you know, we'll just have to figure it out.
We're gonna change the name of the city?
No, there'll be a different...
So that if you see, it's an H with a little arrow, which goes with the fling or the theme.
Oh, okay.
Right, and so next year, how do we keep an H in the logo and anyway? It's a good problem to have. It's, people have enjoyed it, I think.
This, these are solar lights or are they...
LED.
They're LED and they, he has some kind of a battery system with solar...
Like a GoPro battery pack up there or something?
I don't, I don't know what it is.
We, we confirmed that it's not a fire hazard and that we're on property that we have permission to be there, so...
Which is our property.
It's our property, so we're good that way.
Yeah, my biggest concern is vandalism, but I think where they have it, it's not that easy to get to.
And we, some of our cost goes towards potentially replacing lights that might walk off.
With the doggy bags.
It was, it was $500.
Yeah.
So it was actually quite affordable. It was, and it's very generous of the people doing it, so I very much appreciate it.
That's really cool.
All right, I guess, I'll, I'll just send you an email on the other thing. I did, by the way, send an email late today. Dear Horton's, our response to our list of questions, please look at that. Nathan is scheduling time with another attorney to just verify what our options are on the boundary commission and we'll, we'll have a closed session discussion on that.
Would that be next in a couple of weeks?
Hopefully it'll be in a couple of weeks.
Yeah.
But anyway, anything else? Can you, I was trying to stall to 11:16, but I, I just can't do it, so...
Please end it.
What did she say? They have a pool, a bedding pool when we end.
Oh, no, I lost an hour ago on that, Mayor. I just said, "Please end it."
So absent anything else, I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
So seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. Great meeting, council.